Good evening, I'm calling this meeting of the Barrington Town Council to order at 6:55 PM. I appreciate everyone's patience as we deal with some technical difficulties. We got through those and we're ready to go. First order of business, I'd ask you to rise with me and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next order of business announcements, and I'd ask our town manager Jim Cunha to take us through that, please.
Thank you, President Carroll. Got a few announcements, I'll try and get through them quickly. Want to remind everyone that the Barrington pop-up COVID testing site is still operating Tuesdays through Saturdays from nine to five. Vaccinations are now available, it's starting today to everyone 50 years and older, and everyone 16 and over with comorbidities. And you can get those appointments by calling vaccinateri.org. We have two committee on appropriation meetings coming up. One tomorrow night where there'll be a discussion on the municipal and school budgets, and then scheduled for next week on the 13th, next week from tomorrow night is their final vote. It's scheduled to be that night. The Barrington Land Conservation Trust has a pollinator pathway presentation scheduled for Wednesday, the 14th of April from noon to 1:00 PM, and you go to their website for registration link. The Barrington Lions Club is sponsoring an Earth Day cleanup on Saturday, April 17th, from 10:00 to noon. It'll be held in three locations, Barrington Beach, Latham Park, and Veterans Park. And residents are asked to go and help support Earth Day and the Lions Club. The annual Drug Takeback Day is scheduled for Saturday, April 24th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Barrington Public Safety Building lobby. Starting next week, the library hours will be expanding. It'll be Monday through Thursday from 9:00 AM till 8:00 PM. Friday and Saturday from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. We're still looking for summer hires for our beach and our summer camps. If you have any young high school students that are interested in a job for the summer, please go to the recreation website and you can sign up there. Just a reminder that there is a statewide burn ban in effect until May 15, which means there should be no outdoor fires, and that includes residential fire pits. There will be a comprehensive, there'll be a meeting, a joint meeting between the Barrington Town Council and the planning board on the comprehensive plan that will be held on Monday, April 12th, a week from tonight at 7:00 PM. There will be a DEI presentation, and I'm assuming Adam is going to talk about this during his update, but the author, Ibram Kendi, will be making a presentation on Monday, April 26th at 7:00 PM. And you can go to Eventbrite and sign up, register for that presentation. And as I've been asked to, an update on our trees for the last 12 months. Our rolling total, 109 trees planted and 77 trees were removed. And now, Mr. President, if you would allow me, I'd like to ask Chief DeCristenzo to talk about some recent criminal activity in town.
Yes, please, thanks. Chief?
Okay, I believe I'm unmuted, thank you. Since September 1st of 2020 up until the present, we've had quite a few break-ins to cars, parked cars in driveways and on the streets in front of residents. We did put an article out in the Barrington Times just to let the community know that there's an uptick. As far as formal complaints, the only good news is this, I'm looking at 13 formal reports, and I think that shows us, when people have something missing, they'll tend to formally report that. We have a lot of others, so they may go through 25, 30, 40, we don't even know sometimes how many cars in the evening. And they only grab lately very minimal change or assorted coins that are in the car that a lot of people leave in. I think that a lot of people have been told to lock their cars and not leave anything valuable, and it seems to be the case because 13 formal reports since September of last year seems pretty low for the amount of calls we're getting and the amount of cars that they're actually entering. So I guess we can only stress lock the cars, lock your cars at night whether they're in the driveway. Don't leave anything valuable in them. And we are working on a couple of things that we've been doing to try to catch these offenders. The unfortunate part is, it appears from some of the video, ring doorbell video and whatever else we can capture from residents, it appears that they're on foot or on a bicycle. And it's tough in the middle of the night to catch these, you know, they'll run off and hide in the woods if they hear a car coming. I know from experience of working midnights, you can hear a car at night coming from miles away. The other unfortunate part is the study I'm looking at, it's striking on just about every day of the week, so there's no pattern that we can pinpoint to try to catch these young adults. I would say they're anywhere from 18 to 24, 25 years old, it's tough to tell on some of the video. And like I said, we are working on a couple of different things that we're doing. I don't want to disclose everything, but I would urge everyone to call if they see or hear anything. A lot of times we'll find out the next morning. They fail to call us, they'll just, you know, go back to sleep, which is understandable. And then we don't know about it till the morning, next morning when we take some of the reports. I don't know if there's any questions, but that's pretty much the update on that as far as entering the cars overnight.
Jacob, please.
Thank you for sharing that and the reminder about keeping cars locked and everything. I was wondering if you heard if this is happening in other communities throughout the state or in southeastern Mass, or if it's specific to our area?
Yeah, I'm going to tell you, Jacob, this is something that's been going on for years. I don't know how to explain it, but not that it's a good thing, but I'm just glad that it's the cars and not the houses like we used to get in the middle of the night. We actually had a lot of house breaks while people were sleeping not many years ago, a couple of summers ago. But yes, it is happening everywhere, and I think you might remember I mentioned last year during the COVID summer, there was a group, a very organized group that was dangerous out of Connecticut. Gangs that were going throughout Mass, Rhode Island, Connecticut, they had weapons on them. They've had actually shot back at police in Rhode Island. And this doesn't appear to be that group, that's, I guess, some of the good news. This appears more now, for whatever reason, more local area, maybe East Providence, Riverside, Warren. You know, we don't know, it could be any of those three or a little further out, but those communities that are accessible to us via bike path or via foot walking or... So I'd say it's more of a local thing, so it's not that organized gang that was pretty dangerous from Connecticut. And it is happening throughout New England. I don't know what the big, I don't know how that happens when it's not organized, like the Connecticut group that was going, traveling in cars to all these states. But it does happen all the time throughout the whole area of council.
Thank you. And I have another quick question that I would ask on the reports, but I can avoid pulling it if I just ask now.
Sure, go ahead.
And that was, I saw there's one vacancy and also one recruit currently in the academy. Is, when that recruit graduates, does that fill the vacancy? Or is there an additional vacancy on top of the recruit that's in the academy?
Yeah, that recruit will fill that vacancy. That he gets out May 21st, and it'll be about a 12-week field training program. And he'll be, yeah, 12 to 14 weeks, and he'll be ready and able to fill that spot. So that does count for that vacancy.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, chief. So the next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Before we get to that, though, as Jacob just did, does any member of the council want to call attention to anything that's already on the consent agenda? Just to highlight something. Okay, I see, seeing none, we'll move on. The consent agenda are matters that are usually considered routine by the council, and they are enacted by one motion. There won't be a separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, and the request is for good cause, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there anything that anyone from the council would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Anyone from the public want to remove anything from the consent agenda for separate discussion? Seeing no hands. Do I, do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
No, no. Seconded.
Made and seconded, made by Counselor Costello, seconded by Vice President Hum. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on interviews and appointments. And I don't know if Mr. Cato has made it here yet.
He is on.
Okay. If you could, if you could bring him, unmute him so we could allow him to talk. The first one is for Board of Assessment Review. There are two vacancies for one full member and first alternate with a term ending March 31, 2024. Mr. Cato, thank you for coming in and thank you already for your service on zoning. Can you tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to the Board of Assessment Review?
Yes, hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name's Doug Cato. I grew up in Barrington, graduated from St. Luke's School, Providence Country Day, and the University of Rhode Island. Currently, I am a small business owner. I'm also a Realtor with Wykot Terrell Realty. Son is a graduate of 2020 Barrington High School, wife is a teacher at Red Brick School. My experience as a Realtor, I believe, will help as a member of the board. And thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Cato? Okay, we'll be voting in just a moment. Thank you, sir. Next, for the Board of Assessment Review is Julia Wyman. Ms. Wyman, could you tell us a little about yourself, please, and what you hope to bring to the Board of Assessment Review?
Sure, thank you, President Carroll and Manager Cuna. It's so good to meet you all. And so my name is Julia Wyman, I am an attorney. I have been practicing law for about 20 years. I'm a resident of Barrington. I've been here since I moved from Connecticut for about seven or maybe eight years now. During my time here in Rhode Island, I have worked on legislative policy at the State House, working on evidence-based policy developments. I am a former special assistant attorney general for the state of Rhode Island, and I currently practice as a private practitioner and a consultant at times. And so my, practically speaking, I think the skills that I would offer to the Board of Assessment are an ability to process information and to bring to bear reports and data as necessary, working with whether they be real estate experts or persons involved in making the assessments, and then also working practically with homeowners, citizens who might want to make appeals accordingly. And I think just a general ability to inquire of people and make appropriate assessments and allowing them to have an opportunity to bring forth information that they think is pertinent. So I think those practical skills lend themselves to this board. And then personally speaking, I think just a general sense of professionalism, integrity, and a sincere desire to help support the community.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Wyman. Does anyone have any questions from the Town Council? Okay, Counselor Costello, please.
Ms. Wyman, what is your area of practice and what type of consulting do you do? I just want to get a sense of your current professional status.
Yes, thank you. So currently, well, currently I am a private practitioner. I have worked with several law firms who've asked me to work on various employment law files that they are in need of additional resources. And so from time to time, I might get involved in drafting memorandums of law, memorandums in support of motions and things of that nature. So in this specific instance, I'm referring to my work on employment law cases for other law firms, not for myself.
Thank you, Ms. Wyman.
Any other questions? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Julia Wyman to the Board of Assessment Review as a full member to fill a term ending March 31, 2024.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for the discussion. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so the motion carries. Thank you very much, Ms. Wyman. We look forward to working with you, and I really appreciate your willingness to serve. I should ask, I think also that, because your name was also mentioned as a candidate for resiliency and energy, is that something you're also interested in? Or did you want to just fill one of those positions? Jim, can you unmute Julia Wyman, please? There we go.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, no, thank you for the question, I appreciate the offer, but I think at this time, I think one is more than enough. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So do we now move on to resiliency and energy? Okay, so that is...
Did we have a vacancy for an alternate as well for Board of Assessment Review?
Oh, that's right, that's right. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Douglas Cato as the first alternate for the Board of Assessment Review with a term date ending March 31, 2024.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. So Douglas Cato is appointed as first alternate. Mr. Cato, thank you very much for your willingness to serve, and we appreciate you joining that committee. You would be able to participate in discussions. And in the event of an absence on the Board of Assessment Review, you would be able to vote at that evening. But you're entitled to attend all the meetings and participate in the discussions, so thank you. Next item up is for the Resiliency and Energy Committee, and we have one candidate, Hans Scholl. Mr. Scholl, if you could tell us a little about yourself, sir, and what you hope to bring to resiliency and energy?
Okay, good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to introduce myself here. I'm currently working as an instructor at the International Yard Restoration School in Newport. And I'm a career changer, so originally I'm a chemist, PhD in chemistry. As you may hear from my accent, I grew up in Germany, but live in the US since 1997 and in Barrington for almost four years. And I worked for 25-plus years in the pharmaceutical and instrument manufacturing industry, mostly in a capacity of quality management, quality control, and regulatory affairs. So I have taught at the University of Connecticut as adjunct professor for some time. So the current role as instructor/teacher at the Yard Restoration School is not the first. And I bring experience also in teaching curriculum development. And but the long-term experience I have is in the scientific environment, also in direct interaction with the Food and Drug Administration and other regulatory agencies in the US and in Europe. So I left the industry in a role on the executive committee at the subsidiary Roche in Connecticut after working for other pharmaceutical companies, mostly in an international role, bringing teams together for drug applications and other submissions to the Food and Drug Administration. So I'm very familiar with regulations and also with regulated industries. I have led teams during ISO 9001, quality management systems, registrations. So I'm familiar from there with risk management, risk assessment, and quality management systems in general. So that's my background in a nutshell. I am very interested in the, in work towards minimizing the effects of climate change. I think we are in a turning point situation because climate change and the climate crisis get much more attention than a few years ago. I think we have action taken in our state with the electricity through renewables goal by 2030 in Rhode Island, which is a very aggressive deadline. And I see more and more people working towards that. And I just don't want to stand much longer at the bylines, but rather offer my services and my experience on the Town Committee here on resilience and energy.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions from the council? Okay, sorry, I just wanted to point out that in your application, I really appreciated the note about utilizing not only your scientific skills, but your skills as a teacher. That is an important part of resiliency and energy. There's a lot of public outreach, and I think that makes you a very good fit for that because we need to be able to sometimes explain complex things to our residents as we work on initiatives from that committee. So anyway, I wanted to highlight that.
Yeah, I'd like to make... If I may add to that, I saw the, one of the goals for the commission for this year, an outreach to the high school and possibly also introducing some elements in the curriculum about climate change and resilience. And I think it's an absolute necessary thing to do to start in school. And also, I think, educating more of the town residents, not only about opportunities to change to renewable energy, but also about climate change in general. And I think there's a lot of activity when I look at the goals for this year that point in, very strongly in that direction, so I appreciate that.
Great. I would like to make a motion to appoint Hans Scholl to the Resiliency and Energy Committee to fill a term ending November 30th, 2023.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Vice President Hum. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Thank you very much, Mr. Scholl, we appreciate it. And we will reach out to you with information on our next meeting. Thanks again.
Appreciate, thank you.
Next item on our agenda is to, is a public comment. This is a three-minute statement for members of the public to speak regarding a topic that's not already on the agenda. If you would like to speak, please indicate that by raising your hand. When you're recognized, please state your name and residency for the record. Anyone, okay, I see one hand. TR is first, I think.
Good evening, TR Remeschitis, 1 Hawwood Street. I want to go back to last month's meeting on the town meeting. It was brought up that you guys are trying to do some type of a Zoom meeting, which I don't think is necessary. I think we have the option that we can still do it on outside. I believe that act needs to be done by town charter. And I also want to state that I know Jacob was saying something about some type of programming that could be done. His company would be willing to do something. I can't remember off the top of my head what it was about. I think it had something to do with going into the classrooms and keeping track of people who are registered voters or something to that effect. I'm just hoping that if it was his company, that they would not be able to have first in or bid on, if it comes to a bid, be part of that bid seeing since he has the inside scoop on what's going on. That makes sense? I'm trying to remember.
I got that, TR. I should point out that I don't think, I think you might have misheard, Jacob. His company was not volunteering to bid for anything, so far as I know. Is that right, Jacob?
That's correct, and I also don't have a company. I work at a company. It is not mine, and I never indicated we'd volunteer to do it. We wouldn't, we wouldn't do the work. I know from the work that I do there that it's possible to be done. But we also voted against having a hybrid meeting last month, so it's not relevant.
Yep. TR, we voted, we had a budget meeting earlier and we voted against that, so.
All right. So are we still looking to do a financial town meeting outside? Or I know there's a vote on the emergency proclamation for reassessment or something in May to continue the emergency.
Yeah, that's a, that's a different issue. We are going to vote later tonight on the financial town meeting date. That is whether we should extend the date to allow more folks to get vaccinated and allow that vaccination to take effect. So that's, that's coming up, and you're welcome to comment on it at that point.
All right, sounds good, appreciate it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Jim, who is next? Is it Paul Dolcinos? Paul, please go ahead.
20 Walnut Road. Yeah, I noticed, obviously, the acknowledged correspondence, those items aren't going to be discussed today, I guess, because they just, they didn't go forward. But I can't stress, I really shouldn't bypass those issues. Those issues still are out there festering, and it's an open wound sooner that the council addresses them. They're off the community. We had a couple temporary flag requests that were denied, stopping anti-Semitism, which I thought seems pretty honorable from Mike Scholls. And then also Lisa Daff submitted one for PTSD awareness, highlighting that every 22-day veteran takes his life in suicide. And that would have been a nice honorable thing also to reach out to the veteran community, which is feeling resided right now in light of some of the things, flag ordinance. Then the other item, obviously, there is the request to move memorial. I think that would have been a nice compromise gesture in part of the town. If the town insists on having a government free speech flag pole, it really should not be co-located over the veteran memorial, as that's inappropriate. Even the Department of Defense doesn't allow unauthorized flags to be flown on federal installations, military installations. So I think in keeping with the nature that we've all been raised up through the ranks to be apolitical when it comes to serving our country, I think it's inappropriate to have, you know, unauthorized flags flying over the monument. Hopefully, at some time in the future, the Town Council will readdress these issues and we can put it to that. Thank you.
President Carroll, you've hit me.
Thanks, Paul, that brings up a good point. And this has to do with scheduling. Counselor Costello approached me and suggested that we schedule a special meeting Once per year to deal with flag items for the year and only flag items on that that meeting. And um I intend to call such a meeting um in in July. Um which would just be dealing with the flag issues for the coming months. And um. I don't intend to raise any flag issues with the the exception of the pride flag. Um until we go through that meeting, but we will be. Uh calling that special meeting and we'll have an opportunity to fully discuss these things at that time.
Am I still muted or am I on?
You're still on.
Yeah, no. Um I think though we we still need to get to another flag issue. I mean, look, the pride flag technically is not authorized to be flown either on a military installation, so. Um it's not an official flag. Uh so I think just to put that to get rid of that conflict, I think we need to look at some sort of a long term solution. This is the direction that the you know town council wants to take as far as uh demonstrating um you know support for different causes. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um and I think Mr. Hewitt, Peter Hewitt.
Am I on mute now?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm Peter Hewitt. I'm from Bristol, Rhode Island, eleven Wendy Drive in Bristol. And I just wanted to make a comment regarding what I understand is the general history of the B L M flag, the flag flying over town property of the vets memorial. Uh I think the ladies and gentlemen of the town council may be familiar with what happened in Bristol. When there was a similar request to fly the B L M flag over town property, it was approved by the town council. And subsequent to its approval, I think the town council of Bristol realized that they may have opened up a Pandora's box. And they fixed the problem by passing a resolution. That henceforth, the only flags that would be allowed to fly over town owned property and town hall. Would be the American flag, the state of Rhode Island flag and the P O W M I A flag. And I think that seems to me to be the most. The most common sense, practical and effective solution to the controversy in Barrington. Over the flying of the B L M flag off, that matter, any politically, any political message flag over the Veterans Memorial. Uh and I would certainly urge and encourage the town council and the town manager to reconsider. Uh its decision apparently that uh people will be allowed to fly a flag of their choice. Over the vets memorial provided uh the request uh meets certain certain uh certain requirements as well as receive the sponsorship. Of at least one town council member. It just seems to me that there's a there's a there's an issue here of propriety. In terms of flying political flags on the American flag anytime, anywhere. But certainly over a veterans memorial, it seems to me to be totally uh inappropriate. And I would hope the town. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, uh thank you, Mr. Hewitt. We um we're going to limit the comments to folks who are residents of Barrington. Uh to make sure that the folks in Barrington have an opportunity and also that we can get through the rest of our uh agenda. I'm not seeing any other hands from from Barrington residents. And so um I think we will move on. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on the Ryan Poland Memorial at Brickyard Pond. And I would ask Vice President Hum to uh address this.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Carroll. Uh this is a request that came through the Parks and Rec Commission to install a memorial bench. For Ryan Poland at uh Brickyard Pond. And Ryan and his family grew up in town and Brickyard Pond was a special place to Ryan. The fish kayak and otherwise spent some time at the shore either alone or with family or friends. And it was a tradition that Ryan carried on until recently. Um when he suddenly and sadly passed away in a car accident. And uh I'm honored to say some words about this proposal. Um this is something that came through the town's uh memorial guidelines through the Parks and Rec Commission, but. When it uh popped up in my email inbox, um it turns out that I know Ryan or I I knew Ryan um you know from from growing up in town. Uh I didn't know him well, but he was always a really good person. Um whenever we crossed paths, he was funny, he was friendly, he was engaging, he was accepting. Um he was just an overall good person and I know that uh many other people would say the same thing about Ryan. So this proposal was brought by Ryan's mother, Lori Dismaris, and Ryan's good friend, Matt O'Connor. Um Matt still lives in town. Um Lori described Ryan to me as a very special person who was kind to all and truly loved everyone. Um and I I can echo that from from my experience with Ryan too. And Matt is taking the lead on this project. Um Matt has done a lot of the legwork. He's done the design work. Uh he's come before uh the Parks and Rec Commission on I I want to say at least two occasions. Um and he chose the location uh because he's very familiar with that location himself. And if this is approved, he's going to be doing all the the hands on work in terms of actually building this bench. Um so from my review, this proposal fully complies with the town's guidelines for memorials, which um I think the last update was in October twenty seventeen. And this was reviewed and approved by the D P W. This was reviewed, approved, voted on and recommended by the Parks and Rec Commission. And now it's before the town council for our approval. Um I'd like to point out that um as Matt is going to be the the person involved in actually building the bench and doing all the work. Um this is at no cost to the town. And in fact, it it's a a special place for Matt too, where he will visit fairly often. And um he indicated to me that, you know, it he's going to be taking a lot of pride in the bench and he'll be maintaining it himself as well. Um and I met with Matt at the location and he kind of showed me exactly where it's going to be. If uh if everybody can picture um the Veterans Memorial softball field right behind the Y M C A. When you go behind there through some of the walking trails, you take that road that runs down parallel with the third baseline. That runs all the way into Brickyard Pond. And there's several landings um in that area, but one landing in particular that's pretty close to the water. Is where that bench is going to be. And uh to me, it's an absolutely perfect spot um for a bench. Number one, to honor Ryan. Um because it was such a special place for him. Uh and number two, um just because of the value that I think it provides to our community and our open space. Uh down by the water there. It in fact, uh after Matt doesn't know this, but after Matt left. I I brought my kids so that they could play with the rocks and the water and whatnot. And um. Few minutes after Matt left, a a couple of high schoolers brought their lunch and they just went over and sat by another landing and. You know, had their lunch, chatted away. And I'm thinking to myself, if this bench were here, th- this is going to be perfect for them. So. Um I think this is a tremendous proposal. Um so I it it's something that I'm fully supportive and I hope everybody else is too. So thank you.
Any questions from any members of the council? Uh do I hear a motion to approve the installation of a park bench in memory of Ryan Poland in Veterans Park?
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Vice President Hum and seconded by Counselor Breyer. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer.
Aye.
Counselor Conway.
Aye.
Counselor Castell. And I also vote aye. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Um the next item on our agenda is an update with our diversity consultant, Adam Mastoon. Adam?
Thanks so much. Can I be heard?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, President Carroll and Counselors Breyer and Conway, Hum and Castell and uh Town Manager Jim Cunha. And also to all the participants at the meeting this evening. Um I'm really glad to be back here tonight to share an update with you all. On the progress of the D E I consultancy. And here's what's happened since I updated you all last. Our group of thirty nine town stakeholders have engaged in four out of our six Reflect, Relate and Reform sessions. Attendance has been nearly one hundred percent barring just a few individual emergency situations. In our first session, we explored race and unconscious bias. In our second session, we discussed the many forms of diversity and then heard talks from four powerful speakers. Loretta Thomas, Dr. Essen Mirza, Alex Rempes and Reverend Dr. Donnie Anderson. In our third session, members of the group got to meet in pairs and interview one another. Uh as a way to build community connections. And that was an exercise that was really um meaningful to many of the participants. And I think brought a lot of insight as well. In our fourth session, all thirty nine of the stakeholders had the opportunity to speak and to share their ideas pro and con. About having a D E I group uh in the in town. Along with the opportunity to really listen to the perspectives of all the other people in the group. And it was a really respectful and productive meeting. Our fifth session, as uh Jim Cunha mentioned, will take place on April twenty sixth from seven to eight P M. And that will be a virtual community event uh conversation with Professor Ibram Kendi. And for those who may not be familiar with Professor Kendi. He is one of America's foremost historians and leading anti-racists anti-racist scholars. He's a National Book Award winner and the author of seven books. And in twenty twenty, Time Magazine named him one of the one hundred most influential people in the world. The Barrington Public Library is helping with the techno- technical aspects of the evening and are being just extraordinary collaborators. And I've also developed a cultivating a partnership with Kate Lenz and the Rhode Island Center for the Book. And with their assistance, we're going to be giving away one hundred of Ibram Kendi's books. Closer to the event, folks will be able to stop by the Barrington Library and pick up a free copy of one of three of his books while the supplies last. I'm all, excuse me, I'm also working with the middle school library media specialist. And with the English Department Chair at the high school to to collect questions for Professor Kendi from students. Who are reading his book stamped, which is the Read Across Rhode Island book selection this year. So both the town and the library will have registration information about the event on their websites very soon. I'll be sending that information to them in the morning. And we kindly request that there's one registration per household. And um when people register, they'll see on the site that there's also a place to submit questions for Professor Kendi. That email address is right there uh in the registration. Uh in an effort to um pay attention to diversity and inclusion as much as possible. We'll have closed captioning available at that Zoom webinar to support community members who are needing that particular service. I I think it's important to mention that no town funds are being utilized to fund our speaker. Counselor Breyer, along with two other town members, helped with private fundraising. And then I worked with the Rhode Island Foundation, who have generously given us a grant to make the program possible. Along with donations or contributions from three of our Barrington Houses of Worship and many individuals. And so this is truly a community educational event that people around the community have really uh have a stake in and have contributed to. So um I'm also continuing to have individual conversations with as many community members as I can. So far, I've had forty seven thirty minute meetings to hear people's perspectives about a D E I committee in town. And so those, along with hearing from the thirty nine stakeholders. Have given me the diverse perspectives of eighty five individuals so far. So I feel like I'm really hearing from a broad range of people. And I will be able to uh synthesize those thoughts and bring them to a final presentation. Along with a series of recommendations that I'll be offering in a presentation to the town council meeting uh on May the third uh of this year. So along with those steps, I've also met with our town solicitor and also with the Bristol town with a Bristol Town Council member. To learn about their D E I exploration. I meet regular weekly with Counselor Breyer to walk through aspects of the 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 project with the perspective of the town and the council. Given that those are things that I don't always uh procedural things that I don't always know. I'm in contact with President Carroll, working on a particular issue around the um program at the moment as well. And I work regularly with Jim Cunha and his team to address challenges as they come along. And um I also provide Jim Cunha and Mary Ann Olivera detailed timesheets monthly. So the consultancy was slated to cover one hundred hours over a five month period. The initiative thus far has taken one hundred and sixty four hours. And there are eleven official days left remaining in the consultancy. And I'll also have an additional two weeks for creating the final presentation. And the planning of that will also take place beyond the timeframe of my scheduled consultancy. So all of these aspects, well, not so, but all of the aspects of my proposal. Uh are being met as outlined in the proposal that I gave step by step. I continue to be immensely grateful to be working with the people in the town and with the town council to collaborate on this really important initiative. And I'm really happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Questions from anyone on the council? Questions from anyone? Richard Staples. Please, Richard. Jim, can we unmute Richard?
One second, please. There we are.
He's been wanting to keep me muted for a long time, Mike. No, I just wanted to say I I have no question. I just wanted to compliment Adam on his work and especially having read the book stamped and discussed it. In uh my own book group setting, uh which was a very lively discussion. I'm glad to see it's being. Read and discussed, and I look forward to the event and hope to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. And Paul Dolcinos.
Yeah, I um I think one of the things that's important for us with the as a stakeholder with the D E I. Um is that we we encourage a good diverse exchange of alternative viewpoints on race relations and what means diversity, equity and inclusion. And um I know we're going to meet hopefully later. Uh Mike and and Adam have reached out to me and I look forward to that. Uh but I've also done some work on my own. I would like to set up a similar type of community event. Um with a couple of member group called um Every Black Life Matters. Uh they're out of San Francisco area. And um I've been very updating and would be willing uh to set up a similar one hour Zoom type session that we will afford with. So I just kind of want to throw that out there in advance. And and I think that's something we should do because I think we should always have both sides, all issues represented and and be able to have. Continue that dialogue and get people outside what their current perspectives are so that they can uh be informed about other viewpoints. So, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other hands raised. Uh so I think we're ready to move on to um a presentation on our revaluation process. Oh first, let let me just thank um Adam for his presentation and for his great work uh during this. I. I I keep hearing great things from folks about how much we all, all the stakeholders appreciate uh what he's doing. So thanks, Adam.
Thank you, Mike.
Um so a presentation on the revaluation process with our uh tax assessor, Ken Malat. Ken?
Mister President, honorable members of the town council, it is me a great privilege to uh appear before you. To present basically the process that we go through for reevaluation. And also to give you some insight into what's coming next, what happens as we move down this road. Um as you are aware, um we've contracted with Duffy's Reval to perform this this statistical reevaluation. For our twenty twenty and that process is near complete. Um at this. Present time, all of the hearings have been held. Um and before we get into uh the hearing part of it. We'll talk about how a reevaluation process works. Basically, the reevaluation company does all of the inspection. Basically, the reevaluation company does all of the inspections that are required, physical inspections of recent sales and of open building permits. After that, they build models. They will build market models based on cost tables and sale information and also income tables. Then we review the resulting evaluations and then makes a logical edits to that. The sales analysis portion of this is based on sales that occurred in calendar year two thousand and twenty. And the majority of the weight is based on those sales that occurred in the last half of the year. They threw that, we come up with units of comparison as far as rates per square foot, rate per unit, rates per acre. From the units of comparison, we then develop a local real estate model for the town of Barrington. Models are tested against the recent sales, and they must conform to industry standards as were developed by the International Association of Assessing Officers. And also must comply with ground general law. The next few slides basically will describe, and I know that everybody received my presentation, so I'm welcome to go forward. Basically, what we do when we're going through this process is the REVAL company will look at various types of things, the style of the house, the size of the house, the number of stories, the type of construction, so on and so forth. They'll look at basements, basement adjustments, and things like that. And they'll look at addicts, whether they can be expanded or not. Then they move on to other amenities such as the heat type, is there sensor air conditioning? The number of bathrooms, are there extra plumbing fixtures? Is there a wet bar in the basement? Is there an ed block? And then we go on to adjustment hot living areas such as garages, torches, decks. We adjust for any building features, fireplaces, unfinished or unheated areas, adjustments, maybe positive or negative. That's a very good point. Some things add to value, others need to take away. Then we apply desirability indexes, the quality of construction, market desirability, functionality of layout and design, in conformance with surrounding properties. Functionality with layout and design can have an effect on property values. As I know often, when I talk about property values, it's usually positive and negative. I had a homeowner of P L A value some years ago on an eleven-thousand-square-foot mega mansion in a town I worked in, and the complaint was that when the mega mansion was built, eleven-thousand-square-feet lot area, they had servants. The kitchen was on the opposite end of the home from the dining room. So it made it very difficult to get hot food to the dining room without having servants. So there was some functionality issues in that particular house. Of course, I don't put in eleven-thousand-dollar, eleven-thousand-square-foot home. So I wouldn't know what that feels like, but I guess when you get getting cold food when it's supposed to be hot, it's very very disadvantage to you. And we then look at things like depreciation, the age and condition, where in town, functional issues that I just talked about. Also, you can argue, is the property located next to a brown field or something? Then we look at reevaluations. Reevaluations are computed based on home sites and then the additional acreage or undersized area that would then be adjusted for that. We look also at additional buffer land that surrounds a property. Then we look at site improvements other than the home, things like detached garages, pools, sheds, barns. And we value those based on the quality of construction, their size and their age. After that, we'll do logical edits. Where we go in and we look at things like percentages of increases and decreases. We look at all the new parcels, we look at all the deleted parcels. We change different types of property classifications.
Then two more slides, Jim, sorry.
One more. Thank you. I look at one of the easiest ways for us to determine whether or not a reevaluation is economically feasible is we often look at what happened to properties in the last reevaluation as compared to this one. And what I'm talking about there is I'm talking about a sale that occurred in two thousand and seventeen for that reevaluation and a sale that occurred in two thousand and twenty. And though by looking at properties that sold in those two different time periods gives us a better understanding of whether or not our market models are accurate. I've listed three different properties, and of course, as you can see, I don't give addresses because this is not about a particular property. It's about a system and whether or not that system worked. So you won't see addresses, you won't see, and I won't talk about particular properties in the town of Barrington. And it's only because I like to protect people's privacy, number one. And number two, I'm just trying to show, demonstrate how this process is working. So I did include three different properties. The first one was a ranch house. The second one was a basically starting in three-quarters brick home. And lastly, a two-story with a hip roof. I also, those three particulars had sales that occurred in seventeen and occurred in twenty, and two support our new values on those properties. After that, we look at, we do an income analysis for commercial properties. We mail to the commercial property owners information for income and expense statements. We ask them to sell them out. We try to let them know that those are completely confidential. Your competitor is not going to be able to come to the town hall and get a copy of that. But unfortunately, with the ground's current laws, it is a voluntary compliance. So we do not get a lot of feedback as far as that's concerned. So on our commercial side, it's much more difficult to value those properties. So we have to oftentimes look outside of the particular town that we're in to get those models so that we can make sure that we're valuing all warehouse space at the same square footage as it is available in other communities. And also things like shopping plazas, how are those comparative to other communities? Because you don't get all the information. Northeast Reval did a great job as far as that's concerned. We have met with a couple of the bigger commercial property owners in town and discussed their value missions with them and are currently working on finalizing those numbers. Next thing I want to talk about is the events that happened and occurred. As you well know, couple of speakers, and I apologize that I didn't reach out to you long before now, but I did try to warn you through our monthly reports that notices went out at the beginning of March. There was a deadline for scheduling the informal hearing. And those informal hearings took place on March eighth to March thirty-first. We expected and do expect Northeast Reval to turn over the final values to us later this week. And we will be prepared to certify the tax roll following the financial council meeting in June. And the tax roll will get to vendors
in July as scheduled. So no delays.
So valuation notices, we did, one of the things that we do do when we set up valuation notices is we try to point the property owner in the right direction. This is where you can find the information that will support what we're doing. You are asked to please go online, look at your neighbors, look at your particular community, make sure that you're in line with everybody else. So that has that process that has been completed. The informal review meetings were all held via phone, which is unusual. This is my second reevaluation where informal hearings had to be done by phone. And it really did not delay or impede us looking at each particular property. And in some cases, it actually helped because we have a better understanding and communication with the taxpayer. More people can call in and make those appointments rather than trying to get there. Some of the key things I really have to stress, and none of us counselors know this, and the general public should know this, property evaluations do not raise additional revenue for the municipality. The tax limit can have, it would have predetermined the amount of revenue that can be raised for the property tax. Revenue is not impacted by a reevaluation. The main goal of a revaluation project is to equitably distribute the tax burden. We've seen swings for years and years. My first reevaluation I was involved in, we saw a swing from commercial property values to residential property values. It was just astronomical. The community I was working in at the time decided to do what was a different rate for commercial as compared to residential to try and cut that swing a little bit. It did help. But once you make that move, I would constantly advise against it because once you make that move, you can't go back. So you'll constantly have that. So at this point, I just wanted to make sure that you're aware as counselors that this is not over, although those people that had hearings will be getting formal notices from the reevaluation company as far as what the results were. The next step in the process is, once the taxpayer receives the tax bill, they can then appeal to the tax assessor's office, the first appeal. And it's a formal appeal to us based on a form that we will have available on our website and also will mail those out if they are needed to be. And that would begin the formal process. So the taxpayers still have steps that they can go to get themselves heard if they have not been heard already. I have talked to a number of taxpayers over the phone and directed Mr. Nagel and his company to look at certain properties when the taxpayer could not get an appointment or felt there was additional information that was needed. I am here and Mr. Nagel is here. He's online to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, and we'll take questions now. Thank you. Any members of the council have questions? Jacob, please.
Thank you for the presentation, Ken. I was wondering, with the fifty homes that had kind of the closer look taken by an additional party, how close were those fifty values? You said that they were fairly close. I'm wondering if they're, you know, if that really supported the high end of the market in the reevaluation.
It did. Mr. Nagel is on, and he can answer exactly what those fifty looked like after the process. But I don't believe there were any major shifts through that review. There were some minor tweakings that had to be done, but I believe that the consultant that was hired and Mr. Nagel's company came to pretty much the same conclusions after the review of those shifted properties. Any other questions? Okay. Thanks, Ken, very much, and thank you, Mr. Nagel. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on a road race. This is the Bayside YMCA Road Race, the Chocolate Marshmallow Road Race. If this sounds familiar, it's because we did address this before, but they postponed it. And normally, these kinds of things are really in our consent agenda. But under the circumstances, we thought we should bring it outside the consent agenda because we all have concerns about COVID nineteen, even as we see the light at the end of the tunnel. Jim, would you mind telling us a little about what this road race is and what happened here?
Mr. President, thank you. The Y has postponed this on, it was originally December, then March, then now May. In the past, it's been done out in Seekonk. They've decided to move to Barrington this year. They hired a company that called Multisport that runs safe road races, and they have a safety plan that I think was part of your package and attachment. The race also, they, the Y is going with option two, which is the safest with staggered starts and no one hanging out at the finish line. They'll have people on the route, making sure that spectators are keeping a safe distance from each other and the runners. And once, if approved by the Town Council, this would then go to the state to Department of Business Regulation and the Rhode Island Department of Health that would review it to meet their standards. Based on my conversations with Liz Tan, the Director of DDR, this company has run a number of races during the pandemic, and they're following the state guidelines as they flex. So as I said, my recommendation is that we approve it. I think they've got everything covered from a pandemic standpoint and a safety standpoint.
So when we last did this, my memory is that we tacked on a little something to the approval, which was that they would comply with all then existing state emergency orders and town emergency orders. And in that way, we could, you know, if three days before the race, it turns out that we have this major spike of some kind, and hopefully we won't, that may change whether they can hold the race. That could change, the town manager could, if the emergency order is still in place, the town manager could take some step. I don't think that's going to happen, but I, as they already have seen, they're sort of subject to COVID conditions at the time. Does anyone have any comments or questions about this? Counselor Castell, please. Carl?
Waiver. Did our solicitor draft a waiver that covers this? Has our solicitor reviewed it? There's a waiver everyone's got to sign to participate, correct?
Correct.
We didn't draft it, but there is one?
Yes, there's a waiver in the package when they fill out their applications that they sign a waiver.
As Mike, Mike or Cello, have you reviewed it or your office?
Yes, yes, I have. We've used this in the past.
Any other questions? Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the Bayside YMCA Chocolate Marshmallow Road Race to be held on Sunday, May twenty-third, subject to compliance with all then existing state emergency orders and town emergency orders.
I'll second that.
Mary, did you get that? Okay. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
So I'm voting aye, but I had a question first, if you don't mind, Mr. Carroll. So the package of materials, the timeline of the materials don't completely line up. I think it's a good presentation. It sounds like it's safe in terms of option two, the one that they've highlighted. It's dated July two thousand and twenty, so I don't, I guess I don't recall seeing this the last time this came before us. But I mean, how, I don't know if we have anybody to answer this question, but how tied are they to option two? Is that what they're going forward with, or is that just their, you know, yeah, this sounds good, let's go with that one?
I have spoke to Anthony Gibney at the Y, and he verbally confirmed that they are going with option two.
Okay, so with that representation, I vote aye. Thank you, Jim.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on the Memorial Day Parade. Now, this is kind of an important one. We always look forward to having this. We couldn't have it last year because of COVID. And the question is, can we have it this year, or is it still too soon to hold a parade? I'll tell you, my view is it's, it is still too soon. We just can't tell right now how things are going to be for that day. to be for that date. So I'm not in favor of holding a parade. I think we ought to limit kind of exposure. There are certain things where we can control where people are, and a parade is not an ideal one for that. Comments or questions from the council? Carl, please.
I mean, I read something recently in a running publication where, you know, if you run by somebody outside even without a mask, or if you're six feet away from a runner, it's usually fine. That's the general consensus, but it's different when you're in close proximity and marching and staying next to someone at all times. That could be another factor. So I regret to say that I would tend to support that judgment as well.
Yeah. Yes. Rob?
Same here. I mean, this is an event that, I mean, I look forward to it every year. I think everybody looks forward to it. It's a very popular community building event. It's just a, there's nothing negative about the event. It's just such a good time and such a feel-good event. But I feel the same way for a parade. I'm very uncomfortable with that. So I think very regrettably, that's where I stand too.
Okay. Jacob?
I think similar to what's been said, I think, end of May is too soon for something like that. But something you've said often, President Carroll, is when this is all over, wanting to have like a big community cookout type of thing and thank everybody who's worked so hard to get us here. It doesn't look like we can do that maybe even this summer at any point. It might have to wait until next year. But I would, at a later meeting, like to discuss if there is something we can do at some point in the summer to bring the community back face-to-face somehow. Probably not eating, but something. I think we've all been apart for a long time. A socially distant parade probably isn't the way to rejoin one another in person, but I would like to discuss something.
Yeah.
If I could add, President Carroll, the Recreation Department is working on the typical summer activities in hopes that they'll be allowed. So the Summer Concert Series, we do have the bands booked, and hoping that things will be loosened up enough that we'll be able to hold those concerts. So those types of activities.
Yeah. And when we had the birthday parade for Yvette Vary, Governor McKee mentioned that he was hoping that they'd be able to have music in Newport this summer. Everybody's got their fingers crossed on that. I'd like to make a motion that we cancel the parade this year, but authorize the town manager to create an appropriate ceremony to recognize Memorial Day. You know, that's not something where we need the public there. It's possible we could have it by Zoom for the public, but I'm just, I'd like to have our own veteran help design some ceremony that would reflect our respect.
I'd second that.
Carl, please go ahead.
Oh, no, I was about to second, and Counselor Breyer did, and I'd third it if we had to.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. I should note, TR has his hand raised. So if we can bring TR into this discussion.
Hello again. I just want to put my two cents in. You know, it's been a long time. People have the understanding of masks and social distancing, and I think we should try to have some type of Memorial Day Parade or some type of exercise outside. I believe people will take the recommended precautions. Our vaccination rate is climbing. Our vaccination doses are increasing as we speak. I don't think we should be hiding under a rock all this time. I think it's time we stop letting people do things that will bring everybody back together. We are seeing that the schools are going to be placing a three-foot distance on students. I can see that coming in the very near future for us. I don't want to see this put off again, but I'm only putting my two cents in, and that's how I feel. So thanks for hearing me.
Thanks, TR. I should, I have to tell you, TR, there's a great book that I read years ago and reread last year. I think it's called The Pandemic, maybe. It's about the 1918 pandemic. And immediately following a war bond parade in Philadelphia, massive numbers of deaths, just enormous numbers of deaths. And every time, both times we've talked about this parade, I've had, you know, I could just about see the page in the book where they talk about how the hospitals were filled and overflowing and something about a parade, people standing next to each other watching the parade. It's just, in my view, too dangerous. Paul would like to say something, please.
Yeah, we, early in the month, we had a meeting of the United Veterans Council, and, you know, we conferred in light of the current climate and situation that we were not in favor of trying to conduct the parade anyways. However, we are in the planning phase of trying to run something similar that we did for Veterans Day Victory Gate, some sort of a scaled-down ceremony, replaying, in accordance with whatever the restrictions are as far as publicly, stuff like that. But I think we have to do something to recognize our combatants who have passed and sacrificed for us. So we're on board to do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer.
Aye.
Counselor Conway.
Aye.
Counselor Castell. That was an aye. And I also vote aye, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. So the next item on our agenda is to talk about the anti-arrestment policy, but many of us have been here for just about two hours. I'm going to call for a short recess. If we can take a 10-minute recess and come back, I think that'd be great. So we will recess for and come back at, well, let's call it 8:20. Thanks. Okay. You're back. It is 8:21. All members of the council are present. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on the anti-arrestment policy, and for this, I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Castell. Carl?
The anti-arrestment policy, as I expressed back in January, has several fatal flaws. First of all, it is vague. It applies to subjective standard. Secondly, it's contradictory. And third, it'll have a chilling effect. I think that you can really analyze it basically looking at four different main subject areas that are problematic from my perspective. One involves constitutional principles. The second involves the definition of harassment itself. Third goes to the purpose of the policy, and fourth goes to the forum, and that's us as a forum and how we operate. On the constitutional question, there's about a 100-year-old Supreme Court case called Stromberg versus California. And the idea is, the language is essentially that a statute is so vague and indefinite, as it is interpreted, to permit within the scope of its language punishment of incidents that are fairly within the protection of free speech is void on its face, as contradicted the 14th Amendment. Also in that case, the court said that a failure of a statute that limits freedom of expression to give fair notice of what acts will be punished, and such a statute's inclusion of prohibitions against expressions protected by the First Amendment violated and accused rights under procedural due process and freedom of speech in the press. So the idea is this: if you have speech, if you prohibit some kind of speech that is unprotected, but in doing so also prohibit protected speech, it is overbroad. If you have speech that is sanctioned, and in this case, we are a governmental entity sanctioning speech, potentially under this policy, that does not allow the speaker to be able to reasonably predict what might be considered sanctionable, it is also violative of First Amendment principles. We clearly have that here, and that was back in January. I asked the solicitor about which standard we were applying. Are we applying a reasonable person standard? What is reasonably offensive, reasonably a pattern of conduct that would be considered offensive or harassment? Or is it a subjective standard? And we were told a subjective standard. So what that means is that the speaker, whoever that speaker would be in any situation, is subject to the interpretations, the subjective interpretations of any individual within earshot of that, or to whom that speech is directed. That could be anyone of 16,100 people in Barrington. Clearly, and none of us can predict what people we may not even know would find to be offensive or would find to be in some way inappropriate. Within the statute itself, then, I say statute, I'm used to that, but within the policy itself, we also have a contradiction because it does suggest reasonability in one part, and it suggests a subjective standard, just what I would have a problem with in another part. Well, no one who, someone who doesn't know me can't predict what I have a problem with. And so that's clearly violative of the First Amendment because you can't, you're going to have a chilling effect when people can't know whether what they say is going to be subject to some kind of a sanction. In this case, it might be censure or removal from a board. That is a reputational sanction. And it is also a governmental sanction. So we are especially implicating First Amendment principles when we're talking about governmental action. That was the position of the ACLU. And I think that the constitutional argument that they make is clear. With regard to the harassment definition itself, it is a cherry-picked definition, as the ACLU also indicated in their letter. You have an issue where normally, if you're going to call something harassment, you'd have something that is truly egregiously offensive or physical, or there is a pattern of conduct, or there is a showing of intent. There are a lot of ways you may get to the common use or the legal use of the term harassment. Here, it is so overbroad that you don't meet the normal standards. So I would think that were we not a governmental entity, we could be subject to a libel or slander claim under this, if we were to take action against a board member. It would be possible. Now, because we are, we're not subject to such a claim. And I see Mr. Sill looking at the camera. I'm not saying we are at this point, but that would be normally the danger in another context. The First Amendment issue does apply to us, though. But within, I mentioned the definition of harassment being my second problem with it. That's the second issue, is the internal contradiction of it and the idea that it doesn't really comport with what you normally see in harassment policies. Third, I talked about purpose. With the purpose of the, we have to have, we should have a policy that serves a purpose that's not already served. Otherwise, we become duplicative in our actions for no reason. Harassment is prohibited under criminal law. There are civil causes of action for harassment. There's an HR policy that applies to employees in the town. And we, regardless of whether we have a policy or not, we have a fairly unlimited ability to censure council members and to remove board members from boards and commissions. The policy doesn't really detract, the removal of policy or repeal of the policy, as I'm moving, would not in any way detract from that power that we have. Having the policy doesn't enhance our potential sanctions, and in no way serves an interest that is beyond civil law, criminal law, the HR policy, and the powers that we inherently have as a council. The final issue I have with it is the forum. We are not a state legislature. We are not Congress. We are not a court. And therefore, we do not have the ability to, we don't force people to verify their statements. There's nothing that has to be under oath, under penalty of perjury. So people don't essentially even have to say that, hey, in some way, I'm swearing that what I'm saying is true on any side of any dispute. That's a problem. Secondly, there's no test of veracity. There's no cross-examination. We don't go through a formal process that you would see in a larger legislative body, or even an administrative body, where you'd have a series of questions asked of someone on one side, then someone on the other side, and witnesses. We have the ability to ask some questions, but we do not have a governable process with rules of evidence and a procedure in place to do that. We're not equipped to do that. Beyond that, I would say that there is no council provided for any party here. So you have to think about whether you want people involved in this process who might feel that it's important to have counsel in this process to have to pay for that. And if they don't, if you are to recuse yourself from a process, then you're not able to defend yourself adequately. So either we make people hire a counsel or have inadequate, what would we consider, we would consider typically an inadequate presentation of their offense, of their defense, or of their complaint. And then finally, we don't have adequate investigative power. We don't have legislative staff. We don't have subpoena power, and we have limited time. We have one regular meeting a month. Normally, even in a legislative proceeding where you're impeaching a judge or something like that, you would have committee staff build up a case. You would have an investigation. You would have subpoena power. You would have things to have a legitimate process. We risk a kangaroo court, and I think people can come at these things with good intentions on all sides. They can do their level best as counselors to adjudicate and handle such matters, but we are not equipped as a body to do this properly. And therefore, for all of those reasons, I move to repeal the anti-arrestment policy.
Thank you, Counselor Castell. Motion's been made. Is there a second? Then we can have discussion. One second.
I will second it.
Okay. Motion's been made by Counselor Castell and seconded by Counselor Hum. Further discussion. Counselor Breyer.
I'm curious. I have a couple of thoughts, but first, I just wanted to ask a question of Counselor Castell. And it's, two pieces of what you said seem to be in conflict for me, and I'm hoping you can clear it up. And it's that, without such a policy, we are able to take the action effectively that the policy would allow, but also that we aren't equipped and aren't suited to adjudicate such a claim. And so can you explain how those aren't at odds with each other?
Because sometimes you have an inherent power you can exercise in the wrong context and for the wrong reason. And if you're not equipped to do that, if there may be an obvious case where somebody does something horrible, somebody throws somebody off a bridge, there may be, you know, and censure wouldn't be enough. Criminal policy would do it. But if you want to censure somebody for something that is, where it's truly clear-cut and maybe not even conflicting facts, or something that happened in a public meeting like this that would be recorded and obvious to all, you still have that power. We're not taking that away. We still have an inherent power. But there are things that a body is not equipped to do well. And when you do have either more nuanced claims, or questions of intent, or questions of veracity, in any case, we're not equipped to deal with that like a court would do, or like a legislative body would do. And we also have to be careful. Sometimes you can take the same action, but you can do it for the wrong reason. If you suppress speech as a matter of, you know, fire in a public theater, okay, well, that's something. You can't yell "fire" in a public theater, and that's something where you could punish somebody for doing that. But speech can be legitimately a claim under the First Amendment in other contexts that don't involve public safety. You could say the same thing somewhere else as a joke or something like that, or talk about fire safety or something like that. And if you, if a governmental body, it's a bad hypothetical, but a governmental body sanctions that even for doing a similar thing, it would be inappropriate. So sometimes it's the reason you take an action that makes it a First Amendment principle that's implicated. But also, the process is important, especially in conflicting cases. And we are not equipped to handle and manage a complex, nuanced, conflicting situation. So, and, and, and by, and I would also note that by, but if we repeal the policy, we are in no way repealing our ability to censure. That is still there. And, and in, in the individual context, you can argue one way or the other about whether it's appropriate to do so, but you have to take that on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Counselor Breyer.
So the, this originally came up at a request that we draft a policy that would effectively oblige the council and all appointed officials to effectively the same anti-harassment, anti-discrimination policy that the town has for employees, but just have it also apply to elected and appointed officials. And we strayed from that because that has a lot of information about the investigation process and the possible outcomes, which obviously don't, don't apply in our case, because we're not regular employees, and certainly the appointed volunteers are not employees. But the, the goal was to oblige the council so that the public knows that we are holding ourselves accountable to a similar standard that town employees would, to ensure that the public has recourse should they feel discriminated against or harassed by a volunteer or an elected official. And so while repealing the policy entirely doesn't eliminate the ability for us to proactively take action, it seems it would eliminate the ability for a member of the public to, let's say, file a grievance, so to speak. And I would like to find a middle ground. I, I understand there, there are conflicts in the policy. We don't want to inhibit free speech, certainly. But to repeal it entirely, I think reinforces that, that we are not holding ourselves accountable.
This has to be judiciously and carefully done. And I think that when you, when you craft something, it has to be really bulletproof to protect the town, and also for us to meet our ethical obligations. We are under an ethical obligation as a council, not to have unconstitutional or potentially unconstitutional laws, or, or statutes, or policies of any kind, in our execution of those policies, and in our maintenance of them. That's one thing. Secondly, there's a fiduciary issue. I'm not clear that there couldn't be a First Amendment case that could have monetary damages based upon the actions of this council. We have to, so we have to be very cautious, very judicious in proceeding further with, with another policy. The advantage of the censure motion is that it would only take one member to make it. And if you're going to assume that no member would be willing to make a censure motion, then I think probably no member would be willing to entertain a harassment complaint for, under the same circumstances. And therefore, the policy doesn't serve that purpose. Beyond that, if you have a case of harassment, there are other remedies that are available to you, as outlined earlier.
So that, it's an explanation for why the current policy isn't warranted, the ethical and the fiduciary responsibility, because there is a potential First Amendment issue and the conflicts within it. Would you be open to amending the motion to repeal the existing policy and instruct the solicitor to draft a new policy that meets the criteria you've described? It doesn't, we, we'd review it, and, you know, it doesn't put the policy in place, but it, it is a way to ensure that we work toward retaining the protection.
I would carefully word that. I would make that as a second motion. I think that we could, we could, we could have the solicitor research the issue and tell us what the principles would have to be to have a sound policy. But I also would like to know what the purpose would be beyond criminal law, civil causes of action, the HR policy, the sanctions essential we already have, and the sanction of boardroom, of board removal. I, in a prac- practically speaking, what would the purpose serve that is not served by the existing remedies?
Counsel, Vice President Hung.
I have a, a couple of, maybe just one question, I guess, and I, I want to add to Mr. Castell's list of, we're also, I think, bound and governed by the Ethics Commission within the state as kind of an additional check on, you know, in terms of what we do. So my, my question is, given all those, those other avenues, why do we need a harassment policy? And what was the impetus behind the harassment policy in the first place? For example, did, did something happen, and therefore, the town said, wait a minute, we need a, we need a harassment policy that's going to apply to all of its, its volunteers who are, who are working hard and giving all their time to, you know, to hopefully do good by the town? Or is it, is it, you know, a harassment policy might be good to have in place, so let's just get one in place? I'm, I'm curious as to the background there.
So I believe it was South Kingston passed a policy that obliged their elected and appointed officials, and the constituent shared it with me. And that's when I learned that the council and elected, and appointed officials are not under any anti-discrimination policy. It was actually, I believe it was initially started as a sexual harassment policy, and then expanded to all harassment and nondiscrimination.
It's a good point about, about the Ethics Commission. They're better equipped for this kind of thing than we are, I think for sure. I'm open to having the solicitor look at something as a separate motion, because I think that it's worth exploring, but I'd like to see a purpose beyond that which is already in place for it. And the other question I'd have is the, the South Kingston policy, was that, was that something that was replicated, or was it amended? Did, was it amended along the way and changed? I believe it was changed by this council, so we don't have their policy, correct?
I don't think we do. I, I don't think that was the case, no. I think we were aware that they had a policy, or were looking at a policy, but we didn't take it as a model.
And I would think that anything that we would have in place would need a separate forum. We are not positioned to do this for all those reasons. We're, we, there's no, no one's under oath, there's no cross-examination, there's no rule, we have no rules of evidence, we have no subpoena power, no investigative authority or power whatsoever. I mean, this is not like an administrative body, a court, or a, a state or federal legislature. That's, that's, that's a problem, you know, with, with the ministry. And we only meet once a month.
Counselor Breyer.
Just two points of clarification. The council does have subpoena power, and the Ethics Commission only deals with financial conflicts of interest, not discrimination or harassment.
I think that if you're going to, well, that's a fair point, but we don't, we don't swear our witnesses under oath.
Oh, we can.
We can, should we?
Yes. I mean, if, in, in that sort of situation, I, I would think if it seems warranted, but the charter gives us investigative powers, including subpoena, administration of oaths, and one or two other.
What's the process for subpoena, for issuing a subpoena here? Do you need majority vote?
Yes.
So I mean.
Vice President Hung.
I was just going to ask a question, and I apologize for not being familiar with this, but since this came up under, at least in part, that the town had a, a policy that applies to employees but not volunteers, what's the mechanism for enforcing the policy on employees? Is there a, a, is it a single decision maker? Is there a panel of folks who, who take a look at that? You know, the decision in terms of how to enforce it, how to apply it, whether it's a censure, suspension, fire, anything along those lines?
Yeah, it's a total.
That's a question for Mr. Assillo.
Yeah, it's a distinct process. We, we do have a policy for the town, but it's distinct. Mike, do you, do you, are you familiar with it?
There is an investigation that's performed by our Personnel Director, Human Resources Director, and it goes right up to the town manager. There is no panel or anything in place, though. It's, it's all done internally. The investigation is internal, and the decision-making is ultimately with the town manager, unless it involves the town manager, in which case it would come to the council.
And where you go, go to a process like that, then, then you're, you're empowering the town manager who reports to the council. Correct? That's where I say, I, I'm not sure that we are equipped to do this, but I think we are equipped for a motion of censure, which also has the advantage of, of having a, a counselor step forward and move it forward and stay, and be responsible for actually bringing forth a claim. And if we're going to say that, well, if five counselors do not move forward the claim, we still want a process to be invoked, when inherently, none of the five counselors see merit in it. And again, we still don't have rules of evidence, and as far as I know, we did not swear anybody in when we went through this process in January, for whatever reason. That was not done. So there was no, no verification, no test of veracity, no rules of evidence, and, and no formal counsel, plus limited time. And so that, that, that to me, I don't want anything that replicates a process like that. We're not equipped for that.
Right, so we didn't do any of those things because we decided not to move forward. Had we moved forward, I imagine those things would have been part of the process. But what, what recourse did the resident have if they feel discriminating? You say that it takes one, one counselor to move or censure. What if it's not censure-worthy, but it deserves to be looked at? Or what if it's not a member of the council, but a volunteer who's been appointed? How, when, when does a resident know? How does a resident know what to do? If there's no policy that says this is not okay, how, how does a resident know what to do?
You don't need a policy in a workplace to necessarily have a civil cause of action or a criminal cause of action. And so the criminal law, the civil law will, will tell you. Sometimes that's, that's the answer, you know.
But how, how does a resident know what to do?
Because when you have harassment, a lot of people know that's against the law, they can talk to a lawyer, or you may have a civil cause of action. That, that doesn't mean that, that we're equipped to be judged and jury on this.
Okay, so Counselor Castell, will you, will you amend your motion? Or will you stand with that motion?
I'm going to stand with my motion, but I would, I would entertain discussion of this as a separate motion.
Okay. Any further discussion on this motion, which has been made and seconded?
I have a question.
Counselor Conley, yes?
Um, just for Mike Assillo, I just like Mike's opinion in terms of the, the policy as it's written.
You all should have a memo that I prepared with regard to the policy, and, and I do believe that Counselor Castell, in connection with the letter that we received from the ACLU, that there are issues with the current policy that, in my opinion, certainly need addressing, no question about it. I, I think it's an overall policy decision for all of you as to whether or not you want such a policy in place for the town of Barrington. Obviously, not all communities have such a policy. I, I will say, and I think Councilman Breyer did mention that, I, I just want it to be on the record, that if in fact, this council, under the policy that is currently still in place, voted to move forward with an actual hearing in connection with the earlier harassment claims that were made, we would have in place all of the due process requirements, everything from swearing at witnesses, to subpoenaing evidence, to giving parties the opportunity to be represented, et cetera. But we never got to that point, so I, so we didn't have to get involved with all of that. But yes, there, there are clearly issues with the current policy. Again, as Councilman Breyer pointed out, this really started off as a sexual harassment policy, and it was a pretty airtight sexual harassment policy, because they have been around for a long time, they have withstood the test of time, and there are some very good models out there, which are quote unquote constitutional. What happened here is that it changed and was broadened from a sexual harassment policy to a general anti-harassment policy. And, and I think that's where some of the issues arose. And again, I do believe Counselor Castell does have some issues. If we, if you, depending on what you do this evening, if there is some type of second motion, and you want to go forward with exploring other options, I have actually had a conversation with Steve Brown of the ACLU on similar type situations, and I would certainly go back to him for his thoughts, so that if anything did come back before the council, we would have done our best to eliminate any of the ambiguities and possible unconstitutional problems with the policy.
I would note that we effectively, this, the public treated what we saw in January as almost as testimony, that this was not done in a way that you would see in, in any other type of body. There are implications for that. And there is a, there is a sanction that is attached to that, whether, whatever you do or don't do. And you have to be careful when you wade into this, on any, on, on either side of a conflict like this. There has to be sensitivity, and we did the best we could with it. But there wasn't a heck of a lot of guidance in how to, in how to do that properly. And that, and that immediately struck me as a serious problem. Beyond that, I'm, I would entertain the idea of, of a policy as long as it is properly drafted by the solicitor in consultation with Mr. Brown, and we don't see a lot of amendments that would warp it in the way that apparently this policy was warped. Because that, that's would essentially create a lot of the problems we have. And as long as we see a purpose beyond the remedies that are already in law and in place, and within the powers of this council. And I think we have to be very, very careful in doing that.
Counselor Breyer.
Yes, I just wanted to say, I don't, I don't think we did the, the best we could do in terms of how we handled the prior one, because if, it ultimately is a personnel issue, which by the Open Meetings Act can be handled in executive session, which would have allowed for private discussion about a sensitive matter in determining how to proceed, rather than incorporating it into our monthly council meetings, which was a difficult way to go about the process. But I just want to add, if, if Counselor Castell won't join in the motion of the solicitor researching a way that a policy could work, is it possible that we vote on that first, rather than vote on the repeal first?
No, there's a motion pending. There's already a motion pending unless he withdraws it. So we would have to vote on this motion, and then we could vote on the next one, unless Counselor Castell withdraws his motion.
I will, I want, I want to vote on the motion, but I'll do so with the understanding that as long as the instructions to the solicitor are what I under- understand them to be, that would be to research a proper policy that would, that would be consistent with our powers as a forum, and in as long as that has a purpose that's beyond existing purposes in law, then I would, I would agree to that. But I, I would like to vote on, on my motion. I made that motion and we discussed it.
So do you, are you withdrawing your motion, or do you want to vote on your motion first?
I'll vote on my motion, and then I'm willing to, to entertain and discuss Counselor Breyer's.
Okay. Any further discussion on Counselor Castell's motion? Okay. Vice President Hung, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer.
Nay.
Nay.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries four to one. The the policy will be repealed. Now, Counselor Breyer, did you want to make a motion at this meeting?
Yes, I make a motion to ask the solicitor to research a anti-discrimination and or harassment policy that would meet the I guess Counselor Castell wants to say what would what would make him happy in a policy. I'll go with his language.
Meet constitutional standards that would be internally consistent, that would that would be commensurate with our abilities as a forum, and that would be beyond the purpose already existing in criminal and civil law.
So that's the motion, Conway?
If that's the motion, I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Vice President Hum, yes?
Just a question for clarifications. I've 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 heard some conflicting language. I want to make sure that there's not an issue at a a future meeting when this comes back before us. The motion is to research all of this stuff. Is that correct? Is it to research it, or is it to draft a proposed motion? I I want to be clear on that.
I understood it to be researched, but it's Jacob's motion.
Yeah, re- research it, and then we'll decide if there is a a path forward, then the next step would be to request that the policy be drafted.
Great.
So this is just to provide the information.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
That sounds reasonable to me.
Any further questions or discussion? Vice President Hum, how do you?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell? And I also vote aye. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to discuss an act on the financial town meeting date. We talked about this, and I I hope we we still have Richard Staples here. We've talked about this before, and so the primary issue is whether we ought to go forward on the the May date or extend that date out to some later time. Our fiscal year ends, and a new one begins July 1. So we 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 only have a certain amount of time to do that. But the thinking, as we've talked about it in the past, has been to allow people to get vaccinated for those vaccines to take effect. And to then hold an in-person financial town meeting and hopefully hold that inside as as proposed by the town moderator. So the question is first whether we are going to continue this past extend the date of the financial town meeting. And second, to what date will we do that? I I would just point out that we had talked about a weekend financial town meeting. And in the past, there's been a lot of requests for that. Folks have noted that seniors are not comfortable driving at night, so weekends, just just in terms of the the sort of future best practices for financial town meetings, folks have raised this issue of how during a daytime, a daytime financial town meeting would be better for a number of reasons, the the seniors being able to drive, who who are uncomfortable driving at night, babysitters, everything. One of the issues with a weekend date is that it comes on the Sabbath, if it's on Sunday, or Shabbat, if it's on Saturday for some folks. So it becomes a question of whether we're willing to ask people to discuss financial matters during a day of the week that is a day of rest for particular faiths. I I would suggest that we can do this on a weeknight. Myself, I we've done it on Wednesday nights in the past. I know folks like the idea of weekends. But we can certainly make this happen on a weeknight, and I just wanted to open that up. Before we start talking about specific dates, let's talk about weeknight versus day, weekend day, kind of events, especially with late, late times. Counselor Breyer?
Yeah, I I think whatever day we move it to raises the question of there are some people who could have made it when it was originally scheduled and cannot make it whenever it is we schedule it to. And there's really no way to know who's who and how many people are impacted with any any move. Now, that's primarily a reason to keep it on the day that's in the charter. But I think the public health benefits of moving it certainly outweigh sticking to the the words in the charter when when we have the ability to move it. But I would suggest keeping it as close to that. So still a Wednesday night disrupts the least amount of change. It's just moved a a couple of weeks, but people had to accommodate a Wednesday night or not for any number of years up until last year. And I I'd be in favor of keeping with Wednesday night.
Any other member of the council? Does it sound like there's, I I sort of indifferent on the the weeknights. I think nobody wants to come on a Friday night. And that also raises the issue of Shabbat for observant folks after sundown. So I would recommend, let's
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, Richard, please.
Raise my hand. I'd just like to point out that I think one of the reasons why we wanted to keep the option of a weekend was because we weren't clear then, and I don't frankly think we're clear now as to whether or not we can host a meeting like we need to host a meeting indoors. And so for this one year, as with 2020, having the having the weekend date allows us, if we find ourselves in a difficult situation pandemic wise, we all hope we won't be, but in case we do, that we can move the meeting to a weekend morning and hold it outdoors, or have have the schedule and have it outdoors rather than indoors. I would also point out that I I'm not sure the weekend, weeknight meetings work terribly well for parents with younger children who were hoping to have a meeting not go to the point that their children went to bed or beyond. I seem to recall quite a few, you know, people actually like kind of getting upset about the fact that they were out of time in that meeting forum, because, you know, one thing about evening meetings is they get later and later, and we started to have that problem of, I won't call them curfews, but sort of the reasonable go to bed, get up the next morning, go to work, or go home and make sure your children go to bed. So I was, I've heard comments to that effect in years past, and I just wonder if we also ought to consider the fact that a morning allows us a little bit more timing flexibility in terms of a meeting without people feeling like their day has come to an end, or their children's day has come to an end, as opposed to having it earlier in the day. And I I do say, you know, you you create the meeting time, and I'll be there, obviously, that's what I'm supposed to do. But I do think for 2021, I I personally would side more with the weekend morning time for one more year, just to make sure that we're holding our options open on on outdoor as well as indoor.
Thanks, Richard. I I just also would point out that in the past, we've had, we've set up babysitting and things like that. It's just with COVID, obviously, that's not an option. Counselor Conway?
And evenings is a complicated, if I may, evenings are a complicated time for families.
Yep.
Especially those that may have children in various age groups. So again, childcare could happen on the weekend as well. Obviously, it probably would have to for some families, but I just I I just think evening is a complicated time. I certainly now I'm reliving that with my grandchildren. It's been a while since I've had that issue with my own kids. But I would just throw that out there. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Richard. Annalisa?
Yeah, I I will just agree completely with what Richard just said. I even on my Zoom meetings, I tend to have visitors who come into my meetings. So I think it's really difficult for young families. I think it's also really difficult for single, single parents who may have to juggle, like you're saying, babysitters. I think that to the point of being outside, we're going to be a lot better off if we're outside this year, and if there's light, I don't think no, I don't think anybody wants to sit in Victory Field in the dark on an evening, but.
We do have lights at Victory Field.
True, that's true.
And bugs.
Not in June.
Vice President Hum?
I I was going to echo what Ms. Conway said and and Mr. Staples. I don't want to reiterate it, but that just to add to the mix, Mr. Garland, you also mentioned seniors. I'm fairly indifferent, you know, to be candid, if I weren't on the council. I have two little kids. It'd be very difficult for me to make a a weeknight meeting. And I can envision there's there's hundreds of families in that same boat. And when you add the the struggle for seniors in the evening hours to the mix, it just it adds to the population who probably would like to go to the meetings, but but face challenges. I know the lights are a good option, but I I would venture to guess that people would feel safer and more comfortable in the daylight as opposed to in the evening. So I think to one of Mr. Staples' points that we're still in the COVID period, which has kind of come up throughout a whole bunch of conversations this evening. I think we're still under those emergency conditions where it might be more appropriate to have a weekend financial town meeting this year.
Counselor Breyer?
As also the parent of a young child, weekends are much harder for me. That's kind of the point I was getting to about whenever we move it to is difficult. It's it's difficult for parents of young kids to be anywhere at a specific time. I mean, we all have different things going on in our lives that that complicate it, other obligations. And I I think it runs the spectrum of whether evenings are easier, mornings are easier, weekend afternoons maybe, I don't know. It's not, it's not universal that one time is is good or bad for different categories of people.
TR would like to be heard.
Hello again. Before I finish, Mr. Castell, can you just move a little bit closer to your mic? Because I had a real hard time listening to you on what we were just talking about on the discrimination policy. But as of sorry about that, but I am totally against moving the financial town meeting. I think we should leave the financial town meeting at the night that it is prescribed. Have it outside at Victory Field. Everybody will be outside. There'll be plenty of airflow, plenty of room. Turn the lights on and do it. All these good suggestions that you have about weekends and different nights and all that other stuff. Maybe we can get away with it this year because we're under an emergency proclamation. But we all know that emergency proclamation is just getting us more money from the federal government. So that's going to end pretty soon, I'm thinking. But you guys have to remember that the town charter has been in effect for years, and this financial town meeting is part of the town charter. So town charter change, if I'm not correct, please correct me, only comes into effect every four years or two years. I'm not sure. I I know it's an election year. So that would have to go before the town charter in order for us to move to a Saturday or a different night or or whatever. But I would suggest that we leave it in May. Bring it back to May. Get people out and moving around. I know there's a lot of people that feel depressed because they haven't been with people. I've been on three suicides in the past 10 days off the Newport Bridge. So people are starting to get really depressed. I think they need some interaction with other people, and I think having this meeting would bring that socialization back to it.
Thanks, TR. Every time we have an election, we can make a change to the charter. And we've been trying for years to just take little bites out of changing in the charter for each election. But this would be a significant change, and and there's been talk of modifying the town, the financial town meeting. This is simply for purposes of the state of emergency. So that's the, that's the only reason that justifies moving it in the absence of a charter change. But I wanted to, I mean, there there are constitutional concerns about holding an FTM on a a day of religious observance, that is a Shabbat or the Sabbath on on Sunday. Mike, can you talk up, talk to those?
Yeah, there is a United States District Court case was decided back in the 70s by Judge Boyle. It involved the general municipal election in the city of Newport, which was generally held on a Tuesday evening. And in this case, several members of the Jewish faith in Newport brought in action against the city, basically saying that for that particular election, it fall, it fell on the same night or evening as Rosh Hashanah. And so therefore, they asked that the election be moved, e- even though that's what was in their charter. Bottom line is, the court did rule that the election should be be moved because of that particular holiday. So it is very possible that we could run into the same issue here if we went forward on a Saturday. I, we obviously did this last year on a Saturday. We're at the height of COVID. And we really didn't have many choices whatsoever. And and I think with regard to the possible constitutional issue, a great argument could have been made if if there were a challenge last year that due to the pandemic, it really wasn't a choice. Now, this year, in my mind, is a little different because we actually have time to prepare. There are other alternatives. We could still be outside on a weeknight if we began early enough and did it in a place where there were lights, such as the stadium. So and and I'm not saying a lawsuit would be brought by citizens either, but I just wanted you all to be aware that that possibility is out there. So before you make a decision, I wanted you to be aware of that.
Thank you. Counselor Conway?
Just wondered if we knew how many people participated last year versus prior years in the FTM in general?
Yeah, so I think, Mary, what do we have, 200? We had about 200 last year, and it's it's very variable. I pen to FTM's where we can't get 100. And we're calling folks to get the 100 quorum. Generally, when it's a non-controversial year, we don't go up to 200. It's when you're dealing with major issues. The turf field was one a few years ago, obviously, the middle school. These are ones where people have significant interest in it. In this year, just looking at at where things are, and and even if the COA were to just simply kind of bless the budgets as they as they stood, you're looking at a very small tax increase, less than a percent, I mean, quarter of a percent or something like that. So 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 that would argue against having many people there. It's, you know, things could still happen, but Counselor Breyer?
The the percent change on the tax levy might be small, but there are some larger items in the budget that may or may not remain in that might might take a large presence. So so we could easily end up with one of the issues where many people from the community really want to be heard, even if it's not many people from the community really want to be heard, even if it's not going to have a huge swing on the tax rate. So I think um, we should consider that it could be a a large FTM pandemic aside.
President Carroll, Barrington Public Schools has a hand raised, whoever they are.
I'm not sure who that is, but if you could identify yourself.
Hi, it's Gina Bay. Um, sorry, I didn't realize my, I didn't switch my name. I don't know how to do it on the webinar format as an attendee. Um, so, um, I was just um, wanting to comment on um, the weekend versus weeknight um, piece of the FTM. I'm assuming that you are just moving forward with holding it outdoors and that holding it indoors is off the table? Um, or or not?
No, no, that's not right. Um, I think, you know, the the preference certainly expressed by the town moderator would be to hold it indoors, provided it was safe uh, and and possible to do that. And I, I think we're all hopeful, maybe with different levels of optimism, uh, that we will all be vaccinated or the vast majority of us will be vaccinated by then. Uh, so that would help with the safety and and uh, in being indoors. Are are you concerned about uh, the facilities?
No, I was actually more speaking um, as a parent with children also. Um, I think I just took a quick poll of just people in the community. Um, you know, what I was hearing was that it's actually more difficult to find childcare during the weekend, um, especially during the day or early on a Saturday morning would be challenging for um, families of young children to find childcare at that time. Um, a lot of our teens are involved in sports or um, if we hold it later in June, it would, you know, impact people going to camps, that kind of thing. Um, so weeknights would be more preferable. Um, the other point was um, if it is held later outdoors, um, the heat of the day, I mean, I don't know if you recall how hot it was the day we had the FTM last year. Um, holding it at night, um, while not ideal for maybe the bug situation, um, would certainly be more amenable to um, you know, not having to deal with the heat component of it too. So those were just two other points I wanted to raise. Um, but if it's holding indoors, um, that could change things as well. Um, I think the childcare issue still stands um, as far as weeknight versus weekend. So.
Okay.
Throwing it out there. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, our town moderator would like to be heard.
To weigh in on a couple of things. Uh, I do, I do want to be a little cautious about evenings because uh, while it's nice to think that our temperatures are warming up in Rhode Island, uh, that's, we're not, we are talking about having the meeting a full month earlier if we go forward with the the third week of June idea that we were talking about earlier, uh, it would not be as warm during the day. Uh, and I do get a little worried about temperatures at night, which, you know, could conceivably fall down into the the mid to low 50s. And I think we need to be aware of the fact that there are people that for whom that would be a hardship. And I would speak again of the elderly, especially if we were finding that we had to move it outdoors. I do think that it is, uh, I'm optimistic. And of course, we're all looking at this in this current situation. I am optimistic that perhaps the capacity limits of the indoor space will change by then. And I do think that the Department of Health may be uh, more accommodating than they were when Mike Masori and I were talking about this uh, six weeks ago or so, uh, about allowing vaccinated people to come together in a setting that's less socially distanced than what we would all require now. And I think we're seeing some data to that effect, that uh, the people who are vaccinated can be unmasked and together. And at the time, we talked about this before, uh, he and I anyway, we didn't see any, any lessening of the social distancing requirements for indoor spaces uh, for the relatively small number of people that have been vaccinated by the time we undertook those conversations initially. So I think the indoor space actually may be more feasible today, assuming we don't get into big trouble with variants than it was when he and I were talking about this before I put my memo together and maybe to Jacob's point, uh, we consider the indoor setting, uh, maybe to uh, TR's point, the original date, although I do think the more vaccinated people we have and the more age groups are vaccinated, which of course is what's going on now, is we work down through the age ranges till some of these younger parents, for example, to be able to be indoors would be helpful if we did move the meeting into the month of June uh, by a few weeks.
Uh, Carl, please.
I I was initially thinking last year went pretty well on on the weekend, but I see the the problems with that. And so I think being cautious about it, a weeknight makes some sense. I, what about the idea of having people have an option? I mean, they should be able to, if you're uncomfortable being inside because you know a certain percentage of people choose not to get vaccinated, maybe next to you inside, or maybe you're immunocompromised or in chemotherapy, anything like that. Um, I I would, it'd be nice if people would have the option. If we can't, we're not going to do, you know, we're not going to explore the hybrid model. I think the best move would be to let people make their own decisions. That's where they're comfortable, correct?
And if I may, Mike, I think, oh, in my memorandum, while I did go into a lot of detail, uh, Mike Masori did point out, if we do this in the Barrington uh, High School, that we have the ability through video link to really space people out through the entire building, if that's what's required to accommodate a large crowd. But to Carl's point that he just made, uh, it's possible that we may find that there are folks who choose to not be in a larger group setting, in which case these smaller pod classrooms could be used as an indoor space, Carl, as opposed to being outdoor, outdoors, but socially distanced and isolated from uh, the larger groups that may be meeting in other parts of the building. And he did, he did feel it would take some technology uh, work ahead of time, that there could be two-way interactive audio, video from those uh, from those more remote settings within the building to the gymnasium or the auditorium, or if it is that the main part of the meeting is going on.
I just think that whatever we do, there, we we should assume that there will be, even if it's 10% of people who choose not to be vaccinated. There will be another percent, certain small percentage of people who will not be able to be vaccinated, who may want to participate. We should leave that option open to them so they can, if they so choose, so they can feel safe in the environment, because we, none of us are epidemiologists. And I understand there's no, there's no easy or right answer.
So, um, you know, we certainly could, I think, accommodate that, uh, somebody who is immunocompromised, who was concerned and wanted to attend, we could um, find a location with a video either inside or outside with the loudspeakers. Um, we had, what was it, 30 acres or some ridiculous number that we could have used? Um, it didn't turn out to be necessary, but folks could have been, um, you know, quite a ways away. And we had you know, loudspeakers and and so forth. And the other thing I should point out is that we have had, last year wasn't our first outdoor FTM. Uh, we have had outdoor FTM. Uh, I can't remember the issue, if this is one of those, um, uh, Richard probably remembers it, but it was, uh, it was a very controversial issue. Many people want to do a tent. They gavelled it open indoors, but realized they just didn't have the space inside. So then they uh, they uh, continued it to another date and held it under a tent um, with enormous tumbers of folks. Uh, 2,000 people, Richard, was it?
Uh, correct. It was about 2,000 and it actually had to be continued to a second night. And I have to say, I was not there because I was new to town and hadn't yet been roped into being a uh, financial town meeting attendee.
Okay. Uh, Counsel Brier, please.
Yes, um, around when we, um, when it, what it seemed as though we were going to be having an in-person meeting, I reached out to Dr. McDonald at Rhode Island Department of Health just to get his thoughts on, um, I mean, this was several weeks ago at this point, but his thoughts as to where we would be, you know, toward the end of May or in June. And he thought that an in-person distance meeting, as long as there's a backup plan, that that it could be possible. And so I think speaking to um, Mr. Staples' point, I think with an option for people to be outside, um, last year, right, people could tune in on the radio and be in the car. Maybe that's possible, um, so that folks could could stay completely separate, um, if they so choose. Um, but that's, that's an option.
Yeah, I would say that there are a lot of logistics uh, involved in, in all of these options, but I think for tonight, um, we still have a meeting coming up in May and and we can talk about some of those other options and the necessity of being outside or possibility of being inside and other accommodations. But I think we ought to uh, kind of pick a date uh, tonight. Um, and so I would, um, unless there's, anybody else want to be heard?
TR has his hand raised.
Okay, TR.
Sorry to be a pain in the butt, but um, after listening to what Mike Arsilla was talking about on lawsuits and all that other stuff, if we maintain a evening meeting, I believe our chances of being sued or harassment or whatever you want to call it are slim to none. And then just listening to, you know, everybody wants to move the the meeting inside when everybody's saying that, you know, the best place to be is outside with social distancing, there's plenty of air movement. And you, you yourself, Mike, said that, you know, more people will be vaccinated, it'll be a lot easier. I don't see any difference between that and holding the Memorial Day Parade. We're gonna be outside in a meeting and people are going to be vaccinated, you know, and you guys said it yourself. I think we should have it um, the normal night in May. We dress warm and then that limits our chances of lawsuits or, you know, Sabbath and all that other good stuff. And then if if you're thinking that people are going to be vaccinated for the financial town meeting to go inside, I think you guys should have voted on having the Memorial Day Parade at a limited number of of eventful participants is what I'm trying to get to.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so I would like to make a motion and we can certainly bring it up for discussion, but I'd like to make a motion that we hold the financial town meeting on June 16th, which is a Wednesday. And um, we can work out the time and so forth later, but I would just like to get that date down. So that's my motion to hold our FTM on Wednesday, June 16. Is there a second?
President Carroll, could I make a suggestion that you also include uh, June 23rd as a rain date in case we're forced to push it outside?
Okay, so let's see. Okay, um.
June 23rd.
I will amend my motion so that that we hold the financial town meeting on June 16th with a rain date of June 23rd, both Wednesdays.
Seconds?
Which has been made in second. Did any further discussion? Okay, Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Brier.
Aye.
Counsel Castile.
Are we, uh, is there anything relevant to graduation that would still be involved in a cleanup or an operational move by the schools? I'm sorry to do this, but it just occurred to me, we're pretty close to graduation with that first date.
We, we are, and it's on the 9th, I believe. Is that right, Jim? Or Gina?
I believe it is, but I've talked to uh, Superintendent and he has no issue with these dates in late June.
In that, in that case, aye.
Okay, uh, Counsel Conway.
Now that I've been assured I don't need to bring my flashlight, I vote aye.
Okay. And and I also vote aye, that motion carries. Thank you all. Um, uh, the next item on our agenda is, um, to discuss an act on the Haynes Park use agreement. Um, and I'd ask Jim to kind of take us through this, just just by way of background, we had been having, what was it? It was a three-year agreements? We'd been doing three-year agreements for years. Haynes Park is actually a state park, but uh, the the town of Barrington has use agreements. Uh, we maintain the park, uh, and in exchange for that work, uh, we're able to use the fields for our Little Leagues and soccer and lacrosse and so on. Um, certain parts of that have always been kind of off limits and just available to everybody. Uh, but the playing fields were for Barrington use primarily. Um, and uh, we've looked into trying to get some more field space and there is field space available at Haynes Park. But we don't want to be in a situation, Jim, Jim raised concerns about having, what happens if we spend a million bucks to put in a bunch of great new fields and uh, and and then three years later, the state says, well, that's really nice. We're, we're going to make this a state park again and and you can't use it for your Little Leagues and so on. So that's sort of the background and I'd ask Jim to to kind of take it from there.
Thank you. Um, this all started with the discussion on athletic fields and how we could expand fields. Um, and our agreement with, at Haynes Park was and has since expired. Um, and the DEM, because of COVID, took an awful long time to get this drafted. Um, but I, Mike Arsilla's office worked with DEM on on the draft use agreement because they cannot lease it. So it's a use agreement. What the, what's changed in the agreement between what we've had in the past for three years and what we have now for 30, which is one change, but also we will be taking possession, use of uh, of the western portion of the park across uh, Narragansett Avenue and Metropolitan Avenue, basically everything west of the bike path with the exception of um, the the pier and the the road into the uh, the boat ramp. So the area where we have the Folk and Fiddle Festival and that parking lot adjacent to it will become part of our controlled space. Um, they, we've also shared what we have from our landscape architect for our initial plans uh, that would obviously need to be more thoroughly vetted, but for the expansion of the fields. And it would move one baseball field further in and create a third field. It would also create a um, a different, an additional field that would be a combination soccer, lacrosse field, um, utilizing a portion of the uh, of the outfield of one, one of the new fields. And uh, increased parking uh, for accessibility and it would, we would also propose that we would put in two wells that would provide water to keep the high quality of the turf. Um, initial estimates was about 1.5 million. Once again, that has to be vetted, but um, I think with the 30-year use agreement, it just gives us a lot more flexibility as to how we'd like to proceed down the road.
Great. Thanks, Jim. Uh, questions from the council comments? Counsel Brier.
The renovations, um, the, the line item in the agreement is somewhat vague on what, what they would be. Is it the plan um, that's been drafted that they've approved? Or is their understanding that that might change? Because we're still waiting for the Ad Hoc Athletic Field Advisory Committee's report and recommendation. So I just want to make sure that we're not going to end up binding ourselves to something that might then go against that recommendation before it's received.
They, they put that um, paragraph 6B in there, uh, based on our conversations. They still would have to formally approve our final recommendation, and we would also obviously have to approve the expenditure of the funds.
Other questions from members of the council? Okay, I see TR with his hand raised and TR is on Parks and Rec, so I think it's, he is uh, interested in this one. TR?
Hello again. I was trying to get a question in on the last comment too, but I got muted out, but um, I'll postpone that one. But I would just want to reiterate what Councilman Brier said. We do have an ad hoc committee that I'm involved with. There are multiple things on the table that was on the table. That was one of them. You know, I don't want to see something get put in that has not been voted on by either the ad hoc committee and put to the town for a vote. That is one of the proposals. And that would give us the 30-year lease, which we won't have to be worrying about giving anything back to the state for at least 30 years, which would be a good investment. But like Jacob said, we still are waiting for our final meeting on our ad hoc committee and to come up with the, you know, final recommendation and then to a vote to the public.
Right, so, so what, how, how is this different than, thanks, T R. How is this different than the, the previous ones? Six B says the town commits to investing in an athletic field expansion and upgrade at the site of the existing athletic fields, which is valued at approximately 1.5 million dollars. I don't, I mean, I'm not sure how much of a commitment that is. Mike, maybe you can, can help with that. If we are, you know, we certainly could expand any of the fields or propose an expansion of the fields without going to the extent of this, this plan, but are we required to present a, a plan that is approximately 1.5 million?
I, I would say this. If you go with the 1.5 million, that's a good ballpark. If it's gonna be a little less, a little more, I, I don't see it as a problem because it's approximate. If it's gonna be two or three million, we'd go back for some kind of a modification or amendment.
Okay. Okay, any, there, there's another hand up of any members of the council? Yes, Vice President Hum?
Just a question on timing. Is, so given that there's been a, a bit of a delay anyway, is there a, a specific rush to sign it this month? Or if we were to wait another month or two, would there be any detrimental effect on, on the town or its use of these fields?
Right now, we're not under any kind of an agreement. It's gapped. And so, you know, I think the sooner the better. Whether a month or two would make a difference, I, I don't think so. I'd hope not, but it could.
I could.
Counsel Breyer?
I would add, I don't, I don't know if there's, we, we don't know if there'd be benefit on our side for waiting. The ad hoc committee intended to be done with its report quite a while ago and we're, haven't proceeded. I'm not sure what the timeline is to complete it. I brought up the question because I was concerned if D E M's understanding was much more specific than what's in that, I'd have concerns, but based on the manager's answer, I, I don't have concerns because there's no time limit on this requirement. So if, you know, we get a recommendation that's inconsistent with what we were initially planning, we have some time to figure it out without running afoul of this agreement.
Okay. Tony Irico. Anthony? I think you're unmuted.
He is.
Tony, we can't hear you. Is, is your?
Hello?
Now we can hear you.
Okay. Sorry about that, guys. No, um, as you know, I'm on that committee, the ad hoc committee and, and Nancy, I'm in a two subcommittees, which is the turf and on the land, I went, land committee. And on this one, I agree with the manager that we should sign this because there is a support as a separate issue to use Haynes Park as a nice facility and upgrade it. So I think the council should go forward with this because there is support. I mean, I haven't took official votes, but many meetings I've been, and Mike Suwara Chairman is also involved in that subcommittee. It's me and T R and we've been throughout having meetings in the past and there is support, Mike and the council members for using Haynes Park. And the turf issue has been totally decided as a separate issue, but I still think, and most of the people in the committee might think that Haynes Park would be a valuable asset to have more control and this agreement is outstanding and to look in fixing up those fields at Haynes Park. So we have two issues on the ad hoc committee, obviously. One is the turf, but we have looked at throughout the town, what's the best location, Mike? And we have come up with consensus that with Haynes Park would be the best location. Add more fields and, and here's what we have there already, Mike.
Okay. Thanks, Tony. Okay, is, is there a motion?
I think T R has his hand up again.
Okay, T R?
Maybe not.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the 30-year Haynes Park use agreement between the town of Barrington and the State of Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management?
Obed.
Motion by Counsel Breyer. Who, who seconds?
I'll second then. We'll, we'll switch.
By Vice President Hum. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Breyer?
Aye.
Counsel Conway?
Aye.
Counsel Castell?
Aye. I'm close to the microphone.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is to discuss an act on resolutions. The first one is a proclamation for Arbor Day. Does anyone have any changes, concerns, questions about this one? Okay, Jacob, please.
Question is pure curiosity and you may not know, but National Arbor Day is April 24th. Rhode Island Arbor Day and Barrington Arbor Day, assuming we pass this, is April 30th. Have you ever heard why? Does anybody know why they're not the same day? It's not gonna impact my vote. I'm just curious.
Because they're doing it wrong.
Okay. I'll take that.
As Rhode Island goes, so goes the nation, so.
We make sure they get it right before we fall.
Okay. I will make a motion to adopt the Arbor Day proclamation as presented. Is there a second?
Seconds.
Seconded by Counsel Breyer. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Breyer?
Aye.
Counsel Conway?
Aye.
Counsel Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries. Mike, the next set of resolutions are supporting mutual, uh, great, uh, mutual aid agreements between Barrington Police and East Providence for one, Secoq, Swansea and Warren. Can we do those as a group?
Absolutely. I was going to recommend it.
Okay. This is just, we, we have mutual aid with the fire department, which is one of my favorite topics. If you, if you ever need to fall asleep, I'll, I'll bore you with that. But I think it's really interesting how it came about and how, how it works. And in the same way, we have mutual aid with police departments and we're not alone with this in that, that terrible shooting in the supermarket where they lost a police officer or the other towns around that town offered to patrol the streets for a few days for those officers. We get those offers when we have a situation where there's, last time it was with, uh, our chiefs lost, our chief lost his father. And so there was gonna be a funeral and, and so East Providence, I actually, I don't think it was East Providence because the, he was from East Providence, but another town offered to do that for Barrington. Most of the time it has to do with emergency situations, but this is an opportunity for us to do that. Does anyone have any questions generally about these? Yes, Vice President Hum?
I don't have a question. Just, just two comments. First of all, I've, I've been directly involved with mutual aid agreements in other areas and they are extremely beneficial. But the second is, I, I've actually proposed a recommendation. I'd call it a, either a cleanup or correction to the resolution, and this would apply to all of them. In the very last paragraph, the now therefore paragraph, it references the signature between the town council president and the chief of police for the town of Barrington. The agreements themselves have already been signed by Mr. Cunha, which is, which is perfectly fine with me and perfectly appropriate. But I'd, I'd recommend that for all of these, we change, we delete town council president and replace it with town manager so that it's consistent with how the, the signatures actually went into effect.
I, I'm totally fine with that. Is there a reason it was changed, Jim?
Oh, do you know, do you know why it was drafted that way? The cover resolution?
Not, not the cover resolution. I think, I think the, he's not talking about the resolution. I think he's talking about the agreements. Is that right, Rob?
Well, I guess, I guess, I guess it's an either or. So I, I think both the town manager or the town council president would have authority to sign, in, in my opinion, but I would refer to Mr. Arsillo. It looks like in each of these agreements, Mr. Cunha's contemporary signed. I think East Providence is the only municipality with a mayor, so the mayor signed there, but the rest of them, I believe, were the town managers. So it, it, it just seemed to me like that was a practical, you know, a practical way to, to effectuate these contracts. So it's, it's essentially just a, a revision to the resolution to bring them consistent with the, the signed agreement so that, so that it says town manager in the resolution and then therefore the town manager actually signed them. And I, I'd propose that that's easier to do than unwinding all these signatures and getting them signed again.
Oh, I, I think that's fine. It's, it's a little confusing because I, I thought Jim was referring to the resolution, which I would sign if, if these were adopted. But the resolution would direct in the now therefore clause that he, that Jim can sign the agreements.
Yes, correct. As, as, as he already has.
Yes, yeah. So I, I will make a motion to approve the the resolutions, all, all of the resolutions for East Providence, Secoq, Swansea and Warren, with the change to each of them authorize in the now therefore clause, authorizing the town manager and the chief of police to enter into mutual aid agreements.
Is there a second then?
Motion's been made and seconded by Vice President Hum. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Breyer?
Aye.
Counsel Conway?
Aye.
Counsel Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. That motion carries. The next item is to discuss an act on bids and the first one is for Chief's boat.
Not my boat.
Does he got the fishing tower and everything, Chief? Is that what you're looking for?
No, actually, I have my own boat, but I don't fish either. Not that much, anyway. But I do have to mention, every time you bring up that tent meeting, I get butterflies in my stomach because I was there. I remember both nights, but we won't go into that. So the harbor master, as many of you know, we've been looking for a boat for the 100 acre Cove patrolling. Currently, we have a small sailfish and it's, it's really beat up. As a matter of fact, I remember last year, one of the council members, I think it was a council member, Boyage, and asked me when we were gonna finally get rid of that tub or whatever he called it, because it just looked like, it was in rough shape. Has thousands of hours on the engine, thousands of hours on the boat. And I personally, I don't think it's that, that great of a boat for what we need. It's good for 100 acre Cove, but the problem I have with that boat, if there's an emergency out in the bay, we change over to the larger edge water that we have, the 24 footer. And it takes time and I, I think that's a waste of a lot of minutes when you have an emergency out in the bay. So our harbor master, I give him credit. I, I, I give him a lot of credit for finding this used boat. And I have been asked by not only council members, but actually residents as to, you know, why would a municipality want to purchase a used boat? But I have to say, the boat he found, the 2015 Covia, it's a 22-foot boat. It's a little higher, the sides are higher from the water than the current boat that I mentioned, the sailfish that we have in the Cove. And this would allow that boat to not only go into 100 acre Cove, but we'll be able to use that out in the bay if we were to get a call. And when one of the members of the Harbor Patrol is patrolling 100 acre Cove and we get a call, uh, call out in the bay, they'll be able to go out in the bay with this boat. It's very seaworthy. It's a 21 seven. That's why it's a 217, but that means it's 21 feet seven inches, which is actually a 22-foot boat. I think the, as far as boating supplies with COVID and the prices, everything has gone up dramatically. But I think this is a great price. This is a 2015 with a 150 horsepower four-stroke engine and a galvanized trailer for $41,250. If we were to purchase just the boat, 2015 Covia with the engine at today's rate, you know, five years, 2020 or 2021, it'd be about $80,000. And that would be without some of the equipment that came with this boat, like GPS and AM/FM stereo and VHF ship to shore radio that we would need. If you add all that in, plus the, the trailer that we, we purchased, you're probably looking at maybe $90,000. So it's a savings of about $50,000. As far as residents and maybe any council members that would be concerned on purchasing a used boat, it has 147 hours on the engine and the boat, which is extremely low. And although to 2015, we all know in New England, our boating season is three to four months. So I consider a five-year-old boat in New England, if it's treated right, like a one or two-year-old vehicle, if you were comparing to a car or something, right? Because we only use it three or four months out of the year. And actually, in this boat, 147 hours in the last six years is even, it's basically unused. The owner kept it, kept the boat impeccable. The 147 hours on the, the boat cushions are still in the packaging. The owner never took them out, never used them. So that's another plus. We had the engine surveyed, which is pretty easy today. They put a diagnostic computer on it, tells you everything about the engine from day one. How many RPMs it ran at, how many minutes at each RPM. So everything checked out to the survey. And with the boat motor, and like I said, 50, it's about a $50,000 savings. It's very lightly used, barely used. I could also say, I would recommend, you know, purchasing this for $41,250 out of the harbor equipment capital account and had them out from Parker Marine and Parker Marine Sales in Franklin Street in Bristol, Rhode Island. And we did get into a, I just want to let everyone know, unfortunately, we did get into a little bid war. That's just the way it is today. Not only with residential housing, but also with boats and, and I don't know how many other items you hear about. It's, it's crazy today, right? We can't get anything. Everything's six months out if you order something. So, but even with that, they were nice enough, Parker Marine put a stop on it. They, they stopped it. They stopped the back and forth at that $41,250, which I think is, is a decent price and I think would be much better off purchasing this than something brand new.
Vice President Hum?
Yeah, I, I just want to say, I, I spoke with the harbor master about this and he echoes exactly what the chief just, just relayed. And I'll even provide some additional information that, that, that I think is relevant to this decision. You know, because of the COVID conditions and the prices driving up, it's taken him, I think, almost two years to, to find a, the right type of boat for what we need. And the current boat, I believe, was purchased back in 2001 and it has the thousands of miles that we've talked about. And I believe at the time it was purchased under similar conditions as this 2015 Covia as a, a pre-owned or pre-used boat has had. So we've, we've essentially gotten 20 years out of the, the current boat. It really should only last about 10 years or so, maybe give or take, probably maybe a few years more, depending on our seasons, but we've really gotten good use out of it. But at this point, from what I understand, we're spending thousands at this point, from what I understand, we're spending thousands of dollars in repairs. I think this, I I believe last year, we spent somewhere in the range of $5,000 for maintenance. The year before was something similar to that. And the biggest issue last year was that apparently because of its maintenance issues, it was out of the water and out of service for about 40% of the season. And the purpose of this boat is for enforcement and safety and things along those lines. So I think to me, that's a serious issue. And especially in that 100 acre Cove area, like the chief was indicating. From what I understand, the other boat that the town has that monitors our jurisdiction actually can't reach, can't get to the 100 acre Cove area because of the bridges. So this boat would, and you know, that would, I think, serve a pretty significant purpose. So it sounds like a terrific deal to me financially. I'm fully in support of this deal. And I think there's really a need. I think it'll really help the public safety of our waterways and of our coastal community. So thank you, and thanks, Chief, for the presentation.
Thank you. I believe a harbor master is on. I don't know if Jim sees him, if he can allow him. I don't know if he has anything to add. I don't know if he's on there, Jim, if you could see him. No, I can't see him.
I'm ready to make a motion. I'd make the motion to authorize the purchase of a 2015 Covia Center Council boat with Yamaha 150 horsepower outboard and trailer from Parker Marine Sales in the amount of $41,250.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries. Next item is for the use of a tub grinder, Tub Grinder Services, Alan Corby, our Director of Public Works. Alan?
Yeah, thank you. Due to the storm damage over this past year, we have approximately 4,000 cubic yards of tree debris, stumps and whatnot. And we have to get rid of it. So the best, most economical way is to bring in an outside vendor to haul in a tub grinder and grind it all up and leave it on site, and we'll mix it with the leaf and compost yard waste, and eventually it'll break down, and we'll get rid of it. The cost, the low bid was $16,000 with Northeastern Tree Services, and we're recommending to go ahead with them. They also did it last year. It was a little less money last year, but we also had a smaller pile. So this is a pretty good price, in my opinion. It's going to take about four days. So $16,000 to load up a tub grinder, haul it in, and grind it all up and leave it on site. So I'm recommending that.
Great. Any questions from the council? Jacob, please.
Have we looked at purchasing a tub grinder in the last year or two? And if so, I know we obviously didn't. So why not? And are we looking maybe to do that in the future?
We looked at it about five years ago, and at that time, it was a little over $300,000. They're also very prone to breakdown and very high maintenance. For $16,000 a year, I think we get our best bang for our buck, and I think it's worth it. It's also, we don't have to put any manpower. They're going to take care of everything, and we just let them go. So to me, it's a win-win.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to award the bid of $16,000 for tub grinding services at Walker Farm to Northeast Tree Services, Inc.?
They're moved.
Counselor Breyer makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Castell. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries. The next item on our agenda is introduction of an ordinance. I actually was the, I introduced this ordinance, but on reflection, I've decided to withdraw it. Another counselor certainly can put it forward, but I've decided to withdraw this particular introduction of an ordinance. So I think, Mike, that we just move on. Is that right?
Yeah, if the ordinance is being withdrawn, there's no need for any type of a vote.
Okay, so this was just to introduce it, but another counselor certainly can if they want to.
May I ask why it's being withdrawn?
Well, on reflection, I looked at it. I didn't, we have a number of BBL licenses. I didn't think under these circumstances, that store, which is sort of a partway convenience store, partway restaurant takeaway ought to be one with a liquor license. That's my view. So that's why I withdrawn it, withdrawn it. Next item on the agenda is to renew the ordinance of declaration of emergency to May 11, 2021. I am opening the public hearing into this. This is the another renewal of our state of emergency that we've had in the past. Does anyone from the public wish to be heard on the declaration of emergency? There is one person there, Muhanad. Please, go ahead.
Hi, are we talking about the Prince Ali kebabs ordinance that you were doing?
I have withdrawn that. No, we're talking now about the emergency ordinance, the emergency declaration.
But you didn't give me a chance to see why you were doing it, or give me a chance to talk about it.
If you want to, sir, if you want to bring that before another member of the council, they can certainly introduce it. So that's your, I would suggest that you reach out to other members of the council to see if they're
So it's going to take another, it's going to take another month to introduce it, and then another month. I just don't understand it. Like every new restaurant in town that came in, you guys gave them a liquor license. What's the problem always with this place?
Okay, unless you have anything to add to the issue of the declaration of emergency, we have another person who'd like to be heard on the emergency declaration. Okay, so that's TR. Go ahead.
Hey, Mike. So if this does get dismissed by the state before our current date for our financial town meeting, will our financial town meeting be placed back on the original date? And before you unmute me, I did not get unmuted for that Haynes Park thing. I just want that on record. I did have something else to say on that, but we'll wait till next month.
Okay. So, Mike, TR asked a question about whether a state of emergency would change things.
I can answer that. The, once you've set the new date, which you basically have, that is the date that the financial town meeting will be going forward because you're making that decision under the executive order. And frankly, my guess is we'll be living with these executive orders at least through the middle of summer. So it'll probably be moot, but even if the executive order ended in May, for instance, our financial town meeting would still take place in June, because you have the authority under the present order to set that date. And also, there's legislation which the General Assembly adopted, which gives you such powers. In fact, the legislation made it possible for you as a council to act as the financial town meeting. You've decided not to do that, of course, but that's how far it actually went.
Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? Okay, seeing none, I am closing the public hearing. Does anyone from the council want to be heard on this, or are we ready to make a motion?
I will move to renew the ordinance as stated in our agenda. And within the resolution, I should say.
Motion made by Vice President Hum, seconded by Counselor Castell. Any further discussion? Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to set the agenda for our Monday, May 3 meeting. We've listed a few things. Adam Mastoon will be presenting the final presentation. We talked about South Lake Drive, and then the we have a public hearing on the signs. That was continued two months so that we could refer to the planning board for their input. And I presume by then, we'll have that from the planning board. Anything else anyone wants to add to the agenda? Yes, Rob, please.
It may not end up being something that gets put on the agenda for next month. I feel like we've had to deal with so many different things the first few months of 2021 that and we just voted on the extension of this declaration, but I think we've lost sight a little bit of trying to help our residents and businesses during the pandemic, which is still a pretty serious challenge. But I don't have anything actionable quite yet, but what I'd recommend if we could do is, maybe we can't, because I don't know if we can vote on it, but I mean, I'd like to recommend to several different committees to have a standing agenda item to take a look at ways to kind of improve things within the town while we're still within and coming out of. I think the recovery from the pandemic is really important. So to have a standing agenda item for those committees to be taking a look in from their own individual perspectives, seeing if they can come with recommendations that they can bring to the council that we can then consider and vote at a future meeting, whether it's next month or a future month. Some committees that come to my mind are Economic Development Committee, the Resilience and Energy Committee, I think with a focus on the resilience, Planning Board, Parks and Rec in terms of their viewpoint on things. And I'm probably missing some others. Some will, but some suggestions for what other counselors think, but I think that would be my suggestion.
Okay, we can put that on the agenda, and we certainly can put that on the agenda for next month, but I don't think there's any reason why we can't just ask the committees to, in their next meeting, address that. So Jacob, yes?
I had actually reached out to Jared Wallace, Chair of the Planning Board, and asked him about the joint meeting that they asked for, if I had heard mentioned at an earlier planning board meeting, starting to talk about continuing some of the COVID responses for businesses, kind of the easing of regulations, continuing that after the pandemic. I think this conversation is sort of in line with that conversation, which he had said he was interested in having that on the agenda for the joint meeting. So I think maybe checking with the planning board to see if this conversation's in line with that coming up with ideas or who to reach out to.
I guess we can talk about that. The comprehensive plan is the subject matter for that joint meeting, and that's a big topic that could take up a lot of time. So I guess we could put it first and see if we start going too long for that joint meeting. Maybe we would postpone that for a separate meeting, but I will put that on the agenda for our Monday, May 3 meeting. Mary, can you, did you make a note of that, too? Okay, great.
President Carroll?
Yes.
Want to consider adding a discussion act on the venue for the FTM? I think by that time, we ought to be able to make a decision whether we're indoors or outdoors.
Great. That'd be a good one, too. Anything else? Yes, Carl?
I'd like a chance to explain to my colleagues the request I made with regard to the flag agenda. I have requested, I did request a special meeting that we would have supposedly once a year, I would suggest, that would deal with sponsored flag requests. It would deal with amendments to the flag policy or accompanying resolutions. This could be passed, but then it could be read at the appropriate time. The reason is so that we can have these jam-packed regular meetings. And yet, at the same time, address the need for the community to stand in solidarity with marginalized groups and people who may not have had the full protections of the Constitution. And that we can still address those things, and also the people who protect those values. I would also note for the record that I in no way said or rejected a flag that the veterans or denied a flag that the veterans were requesting. I was in the process. I had actually talked to Dr. Daft about possibly a mental health awareness flag and going down that route. So I'm just saying that we should put these discussions into one confined item, and that would be dealt with at a special meeting rather than putting us in a position where we can't address the figurative and literal potholes that we have to address. And I think I think we can strike a balance in that way. That was my purpose, and I don't think that I fully have fleshed that out for my colleagues on the council. But that's the reason I did it, because I think we are doing something worthy when we take what is admittedly a symbolic measure to acknowledge equity and inclusion, diversity, and justice. But at the same time, I certainly understand how those discussions and deliberations can go and the need to respect the fact that we have one regular meeting a month. And that was the reason for my request. I just wanted to get that on the record, and that's where I'm going with it. Obviously, I can't govern what anybody else thinks about it, but that was the reason I made the request. And that's my perspective. I thought it was important because we are talking about future agendas to indicate where I was going on that, so people can think about what they think about.
Great. Thanks, Carl. Yeah, we will schedule that. We'll start polling folks for a good time in we have a meeting in the end of July, but we want to do a special meeting that's just devoted to this topic. Okay, if there is nothing else for future agendas, do I hear a motion to move into executive session in accordance with Rhode Island General Laws 42465A2 litigation, shine harmony, 42465A5 acquisition of property, and 42465A1 personnel, Town Manager James J. Cunha, and to discuss executive session minutes from July 27, 2020 for placement on the town council agenda for May 3, 2021?
Don't move.
Don't move.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Castell and seconded by Counselor Hum. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. We are going into executive session. We will return from executive session to this Zoom meeting, but we'll be going to a separate Zoom meeting to discuss those matters. And so anyone's welcome to stick around if they want. Thank you.
Everyone, we all run into these little glitches, just letting me in.
Okay, Mike, so
So in public, public session, what we need to do is we need to close the executive session. The motion is to close the executive session, reconvene in public session, and seal the minutes of the closed session. Let's start with that as motion number one.
Okay, I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Vice President Hum?
Aye.
Counselor Brier?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye.
Okay, the next motion is to make public a vote that the council took in executive session to raise the manager's salary two percent effective as of July one, two thousand twenty one.
Okay, I'll I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Castell. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Brier?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye.
Final motion would be adjourned unless there's something else.
Oh, Jim, this um again, fantastic job leading us through this pandemic and we'll we'll talk more about this. I I look forward to um myself sitting down with you and talking about this, but you've been just a great leader, in my opinion. I think you've been the best leader we could have had for this crisis. And continuing.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I would second every word of that.
Does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Uh Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Brier?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Uh the motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good night, everyone. Good night.